Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the St. Helena Planning Commission meeting for April 19th, 2016, and ask Commissioner Kissner to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cobenstein?
Present.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Present.
Commissioner Monet?
Here.
Vice Chair Kissner?
Here.
Chair Parker?
Present.
Moving on to our public forum, this is an opportunity for the public to address the Commission on items of interest to the public that are not listed on tonight's agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the Commission may not engage in discussion nor take action on matters not described on the agenda. Would anyone like to speak at public forum?
Jeff Ellsworth, 1434 Sylvaner. Napa County has the highest rate of cancer in the state for children and Caucasian adults, the highest rate in the state. It is the second highest rate in the state for cancer for Latinos. We don't know what is causing it, whether it's pesticides, industrial output, carbon emissions, we don't know. St. Helenaans reside in Napa County, so this concerns us. We do know that in Bordeaux, France, another wine-growing region, the cancer rates are also extremely high. People there are marching together with signs in the streets, asking for action. Here we are asking our public officials to continue seeking answers for us. We know the county has hundreds of millions of dollars in investments. Surely, the health of our community should be the primary investment. I'm very serious about this. I'm as serious as cancer. Also, back in 2008, the definition of the word agriculture was changed by the Board of Supervisors in a county general plan update. The public was never made aware of that change, and it is only now that we are beginning to understand the impacts of that change and how it impacts us here in St. Helena. For a change such as this to occur, which most definitely intensifies commercial use in the county agricultural preserve, for this to happen without a measure P vote of the people, I believe violates my civil rights and the civil rights of every voter in this county and in our town. Very troubling is the notion that a local elected body took it upon themselves to change the definition of a word such as agriculture, which belongs to all of us, and to do so without public involvement in the process. If they can change the definition of a word like agriculture without public process, what other words could they change? Could they change words like property rights? Could they change words like water rights? Could they change words like voting? Let's have a conversation with our county about this and protect our citizens. The time is now to do so.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak at public forum?
My name is Polly Ogden. I live at 1850 Granger Way at the Quail Meadows Homeowners Association. As you all know, I have a design and construction business, and I'm in front of you many times with my own projects, and I'm pro-development in that regard. However, the other night, Sunday night, I was at my house. It was beautiful evening. I went outside, go up to my bedroom, opened the door, and I was greeted with screeching heavy metal music coming from across the vineyard from Berenger. It went on and on, and I called the police and said, "Is this an allowed situation?" And they looked and said they did not have a noise permit, so they said they would send someone over to ask them to be quiet. Of course, nothing happened. So I called about 30 minutes later, and they said, "No, that it didn't matter. They were a business, and they were allowed to do this." And I said, "Wow. I didn't know that. I mean, I'm a business too. I'm a construction business, and I can't hammer one nail on a Sunday, let alone put heavy metal music in your ears." So I don't know what this is about. I'll look into it further, but I thought I'd take the opportunity to at least say that when we approve these venues that are bigger, that are bringing in a lot of people, the peace and quiet that we all cherish here can go downhill if we don't include some restrictions to what they're allowed to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Susan Shea, and I live at 1842 Partridge Court, which is also part of the Quail Meadows Homeowner Association. And I'm really here just supporting what Polly has just said. We have this enormous hotel that I am their most immediate neighbor to their southern flank, and noise is a serious factor. As Polly said, this was Sunday night, but I'm very concerned about the general peace of this community, if people can apply for permits and then sort of violate them or not apply at all. And we have to keep pestering the police, but it really is an issue, and I would hope that the committee, planning committee, and council would take note of this as we are giving permits to these larger corporations and institutions, that we need to control the noise for the peace of our own community. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak at public forum? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public forum and move on to our consent items. There are two this evening: the approval of the minutes from our April 5th meeting and a design review exemption of 929 Main Street. Would anyone, either from the Commission or the public, like to pull either of those items? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar or consent items.
So moved.
Second it.
Vice Chair Kissner?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Cobenstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Chair Person Parker?
Yes. Before we move on to item six, which is our study session of the general plan, I would like to ask my fellow Commissioners if we would like to move that below our public hearings and move up item seven, item eight, and item nine.
That seems like a good idea.
Is that fine with everyone?
I think that's a great idea.
All right. So with that in mind, I'm going to move on to our public hearings. Number seven, it's a use permit for 1915 Main Street. May we have a staff report?
Thank you, Chair Parker. I do not believe my applicant is in the room. Never mind. So the use permit before you tonight is a request from Spring Mountain Hotel LLC, which is operating the Los, or constructing the Las Alcobas Hotel at 1915 Main Street. The property is a 3.83 acre parcel, contains a historic single-family home, the Acacia House, which is currently being renovated to facilitate hotel and restaurant operations. And the application is for a brewery operation to be housed completely within an existing approved structure or under construction but approved structure to essentially to facilitate a type 75 liquor license. As is well-known by this Commission, liquor licenses are very expensive. They're limited in number based on population of the county. The type 75 is a mechanism that allows an alternative issuance of a liquor license, and it's intended for those folks who also brew beer. And so we've seen a number of businesses kind of pursuing a brewery use permit or brewery land use approval to facilitate the type 75 liquor license rather than trying to pursue the straight liquor license. So that's essentially the intent of the application. The brewery is limited in capacity to a maximum of seven barrels in any one brewing session, which is 310 gallons. The applicants have indicated they intend to brew between 10 and 12 times a year, essentially just to meet the requirements of the alcohol beverage control limitations or stipulations for the type 75 liquor license. No bottling, distribution, or off-site sales are proposed with this project, and the conditions have limited that allowance, so the beer can only be brewed and consumed on-site. Interestingly, this application also is proposing kind of a hybrid brewing system where the wort or the kind of the tea that goes into making beer is made off-site and then imported, and they just do the fermentation on-site and then kegging and then serving the beer at the hotel. Site's zone service commercial, there's a definition for service commercial in the staff report. It's intended to implement the service commercial general plan designation. Breweries are identified as a conditional use in this zoning district. However, a definition for breweries is not provided, as we previously discussed. The zoning code identifies that the standard use permit findings shall be made to determine consistency of any use with the policies of the general plan and the purpose of the zoning district. Staff conducted the analysis for the use, didn't identify any issues. As it's not really an expansion of the use with regards to drawing more traffic, it's essentially an internal accessory brewery use to the approved hotel and event activities on the site. Given that, staff is recommending approval, subject to findings by the Commission that the previously conducted, or previously completed mitigated negative declaration is adequate. And the water neutrality report has found that no significant impacts is associated with the brewery use, given the unique nature of how the beer will be made, as I mentioned previously, and no comments other than one email exchange and a phone call conversation just from a neighboring property owner, HOA, just asking some questions about what the intent of the application was. Once I let them know, they're very familiar with the type 75 process and had no concerns. So given that, staff's recommending approval and has identified how the project meets the required findings in the staff report.
Perfect. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for staff at this time?
Was there any talk about a noise study? I don't know if this kind of operation has extra noise, just in deference to what was just said and also...
There was no request or discussion of noise study. The elements of brewing beer, essentially fermentation, does not produce any noise, and they're not proposing any bottling on-site.
Okay. And the trucks bringing the stuff would be...
Seen as minimal compared to the approved activities.
During working hours. And I mean, is that understood?
I don't believe there is a condition specific to deliveries occurring only during working hours in this use permit. However, any activities on-site would be subject to the previously approved use permit regarding the hotel and event activities, as well as the noise ordinance.
And that has that on there, or you don't know it?
I don't know that there is a limitation on truck hours, but regardless of whether the limitation is specifically spelled out or not, they're required to comply with the noise ordinance.
All right. Can I also ask if the, if they're, what the, or I can wait. I'm not sure if this is appropriate time, but I just wanted to know what the existing water use was, because it's not using, you know, how did you determine the existing water use since there isn't, you base it on what?
They had identified the existing water use as 1,619 gallons per day from the previous use prior to the Las Alcobas Hotel being approved, so the use is on the site previously. And including this new use, the water use is 1,485 gallons per day, and so they're well below the required limitations, 134 gallons below what was previously used on the site. So there's still compliance with the neutral requirement.
Okay. Thank you.
Perfect. All right. With that, I would like to open up the public hearing and invite the applicant to come forward if he has a presentation.
Hi. Good evening. David Shipman, representing Spring Mountain LLC and also Las Alcobas. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I didn't have a particular presentation. I thought that you did a fine job, so.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
Anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Go ahead.
I have a question. Being the new person in town, when do you actually plan to open and begin operations?
September. We don't have a specific date yet, but the date range is September.
And the restaurant is a sit-down. Can you describe the restaurant operation that this brewing operation is connected with?
The restaurant will be separate from the brewing operation, even though that the brewing operation will be adjacent to the restaurant.
No, but I mean, the brewery is going to serve the restaurant customers.
That's correct.
Could you tell me a little bit about the restaurant itself?
Sure. Will be a three-meal-a-day operation, serving seven days a week, 365 days a year. So hours of operation will be 7:00 a.m. until 11:00 p.m.
And how many seats is it?
58 seats inside, a total of 108 seats if you take the surrounding deck of the Acacia House and a small little outside patio.
It'll serve the general public in addition to the guests at the hotel?
That's correct.
Do you have an idea about if there are any restrictions about trucking in the barrels and what the, or if that's, you know, what that's about in terms of noise for the neighbors?
Not to my knowledge, but I will share with this group that I'm the general manager for the hotel. So we're working on a transitional plan, because I think that for the type of guests that we're going to have and the size of the site, we want to limit the amount of traffic that's coming in. So my intention is to have a number of these deliveries delivered off-site and then brought into the property at a subjected time when there's not a lot of traffic. And so internally, we would do that. The truck traffic to Las Alcobas would be relatively minimal is my goal.
Right. But I'm wondering if that time would be, you know, off work hours, so it would be, you know, disturbing, or on weekends. I'm just thinking about the noise for the neighbors, not the peak traffic, but...
I haven't even looked at it or evaluated, but the quantity of beer that we'd be making is pretty limited. And so the truck, the other truck traffic will only be subjected to certain times of the day based on normal delivery times that, say, Cisco or Civitas, a uniform cleaning company, would be accessing. So, and I don't know what times those typically are for other businesses, but we'll comply with whatever the normal times are.
Senior Planner Erin Heacock was just reminding me that the delivery times are governed by the noise ordinance currently.
Oh, good. Okay.
Whatever that is, we'll comply with it.
Okay. The other question I have is, what do you, what do you, what do you have planned in terms of amplified music for parties, for weddings? Do you have outdoor areas that are going to happen?
You know what, Bobby, this, that's, you can't discuss that this is just the brewery. This isn't the use permit for the hotel.
Oh, sorry. My bad.
Yeah, sorry.
All right.
Do you have any other questions just on the brewery permit?
No.
Okay. Perfect. All right, well, any other questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to speak on this agenda item?
Jeff Ellsworth, 1434 Sylvaner. It's a little problematic or troubling that this project has come in piecemeal, one thing at a time. First, it was 50 rooms, then it was 70, then it removed the affordable housing aspect. And very deep in the original proposal was the item that removed the on-street parking for the neighbors. That's very troubling to me, and I would hope that by putting in that turn lane, there's still some discussion to how to keep the on-street parking for the neighbors. I think the idea of a brewery, we didn't know this was going to be, you know, put in. This thing keeps growing. I worry about the neighbors. I'm, you know, I live in the area. How is it going to impact me? I think a traffic and noise analysis makes sense. How much beer could they make there? You know, they may say that, "Well, we're only going to make a little bit," but if they're approved, how much could they make? Because as we're seeing, people's ideas, not just this project, but other projects too, they say, "Well, we just want to keep it small," but then things change, and then we want it to grow. So I think we need to analyze that. So yeah, traffic study, noise analysis. And the other thing is looking at how many liquor licenses do we need in our town. We're seeing increasing death toll in the county and the city due to what's called binge tourism, and this is an alcohol-based tourism model. And at a certain point, do we reach a saturation level of alcohol serving in a small community, particularly with these two small roads that serve our town? So I'm just concerned that we keep adding things to this property, and at what point is it going to stop growing? And we want to be good neighbors. We want our neighbors to be good neighbors. We all want to work together. I'm very concerned when I hear stories about these neighbors here being impacted by very loud music. They purchased their home in a residential area, and the value of, the quality of their life is being impacted. So we all need to work together, and we are here. We're not going anywhere, and we will be the neighbors. So let's all make sure that as we go forward, that we do so with utmost respect for each other. And so that's, I just want to voice that concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Hello, my name is Mike Qualia. I live at 1933 Spring Street. I'm here representing my father, Raymond Qualia, who lives directly across the street from this project, owns both residences at 1930 Main Street as well as 1112 Pratt Avenue. There's a small vineyard associated with our property that is directly across the street, and I echo the sentiments of Mr. Ellsworth in that this project just continues to grow from when it was first started. When it first came out, we didn't really oppose it because we believe it was the right thing to do. However, with the restaurant, with now a brewery, what's going on is that we can't even park on our own street any longer. I've been prevented from farming the property over. I can't make a turn with the tractor any longer because just the workers that are there right now doing the construction. I've approached Deanna Bowler, the project manager, as well as the foreman up on the job, and personally, actually, has been met with rude and no cooperation whatsoever. So I have deep concerns about when this brewery goes in and there's more addition to this project, that people don't have anywhere to park. I don't know that the parking has been increased with each one of the additions to this project. Right now, there are cars parked all the way down Pratt Avenue, down Cronella, as well as on Main Street, and these are just the workers that are building the place. So what happens when it opens and we add all these little projects that require more employees to be there? Are they parking on-site? Is the complete parking project on-site? That's kind of what my main question is. We've farmed this property since 1883. I'm the third generation, fourth generation of my children to be working on this land, and it's really disconcerting to see that this is what the community is turning into. Picking up nails, I pick up garbage from the workers. These concerns have been brought to the attention of the project manager, as well as the foreman up there, and met with negative results. They quit parking on the property for about two days. I've called the police. Police come out, say my property's not posted with no parking sign, so I guess I have to put those ugly things up to keep people off my land, or my father's land. So I would just urge the council to proceed with caution and maybe some type of restriction when the place opens on where people can actually park. They need to maintain all of this on-site. 108-seat restaurant with a brewery, as well as all the rooms that are going to be there, I just don't see the parking on-site for that to happen. So I can only anticipate that when this project opens is that the problems are going to get worse for the local neighbors and the quality of life and our ability to actually farm in this agricultural community is going to be further diminished. So I would just urge to proceed with caution. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and invite Commissioner Discussion. Who would like to go first? Commissioner Sweeney?
My only thoughts are just making sure, based on public comment, that we're keeping to the discussion around what's on the agenda, which is specifically about modifying this use permit or allowing for discussion on the type 75 license. That a lot of the comment brought forth tonight, although I think interesting here...
Related is not on point.
Yeah, is not relative to this topic.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I'm not sure that the brewery is going to add any, you know, going to intensify the legitimate concerns that people have said. And I think, I think alcohol regulation by the state is wacky as can be. I mean, you can have, you cannot have a grocery store that sells liquor, a restaurant or a liquor store within 300 feet of a high school, but you can have a wine tasting facility within 10 feet of the high school. So all my, I bring that up because I think our laws are a little crazy. This looks like a loophole. The brewery thing looks like a loophole in trying to get a full bar service. Alcohol is alcohol, as far as I'm concerned, whether it's beer, a martini, or wine. And so I don't have any objection to the brewery, you know, it's, because I don't think it will impact neighbors more, or if I did, I would have an objection, but from what I can see and hear, it won't. It won't impact the water more, and those are, and I suppose it won't impact, are there, I think they're septic tanks, or are they on city?
They will be connecting to city sewer.
So are the washing of these, of the tons, I mean, is there any problem with the beer kegs? Is there, I assume the water, the water analysis, I saw, the water analysis is okay. So I don't have an objection to this, to this brewery being made. I think if the ABC catches on, they'll probably change the, change the laws right now, but while they're the way they are, I'm fine with approving this.
Commissioner Cobenstein?
You know, I'm a little on the fence on this one, because the whole place is not in operation. The last time we dealt with this brewery, we were dealing with an existing restaurant, and although it was a service commercial district also, it was a very different section of the service commercial. This is a little spot of service commercial, which is quite close to residences. I'm not saying that ultimately I couldn't approve this. I think it's a little premature, and I am a little bit troubled by the serial changes to the project. It seems like it's not fully baked, you know? I can help you with a little bit of that. This is the third group that's been in there to own it, so that they've been back, this is the fourth time they've been back. Each time, different group. Really? Yeah.
And I think that's a really important point to make, is that although it will come up again with the general plan. I mean, when...
Absolutely.
Every time we bring in a different group of folks, in this case, different ownership, I don't believe it's fair to penalize the current owners for trying to do what they're doing with their business plan. In this case, this is not changing the use of that space. This is simply saying it's difficult to get a liquor license in this state, and there is, as Bobby pointed out, there are ways to make that a little less difficult, and businesses, like we all do with our own business, look for the best way from point A to point B. I don't believe, in this particular case, it's going to increase traffic. I don't believe it's going to change the mix of traffic. The customers that are going to be attending or going to this hotel and this restaurant are coming for a certain level of service, a certain food quality, and the fact that the beer is made on-site or not off-site isn't going to change the amount of guests come to have that beer. It's simply changing the way that the licensing is being approached. It's not a, there's no other business impact in my view than that.
I will also say, when this is approved, that they met all the parking requirements for the number of rooms that they had and...
Restaurants.
For the restaurant, the number of seats they had in the restaurant.
Okay. So condition number nine has a maximum capacity of seven barrels. Annually? Weekly? What, what is it?
At any one, so it's the brewing equipment is limited to a maximum capacity of seven barrels, and you have a schematic of the equipment in your packet. So that's 310 gallons, I believe they said, essentially once a month in the, 10 times a year to 12 times a year.
Yeah, it does say once a month. I think I would be more comfortable about it if the use permit was more specific about the level of activity. When we did this at the Harvest Inn, they were very specific about the maximum number they were going to brew. And my only concern there is that you get this type of license, you can become basically a brew pub. You know, we don't know what this restaurant is going to be. I mean, I heard a little bit about it tonight, but it could be an entirely, could transform into something different. And if it was brew pub, it would presumably do that because they were producing more beer, if we can stipulate in here.
Can I ask the question, though, that regardless if they're serving more beer than margaritas than Cabernet Sauvignon, you still, we still built in or baked into the use permit is the capacity of the facility, the capacity of parking, and the hotel room. So the mix in what is served doesn't change the envelope of how many people can be on property.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about the number of people. I think I'm talking about the character of the restaurant.
Well, if they change the restaurant to sushi or to hamburger, I mean, I don't, it seems to me that the business is going to need to do what it needs to do to, as long as it doesn't impact, you know, the infrastructure and the neighbors, to my mind, anyway, I kind of like, I don't, I'm in awe of people who can successfully run businesses, and I don't, I don't, I don't know that I could feel okay about, you know, having a problem because of that kind of decision, as long as it didn't impact neighbors' infrastructure and the rest of the permit.
So currently, the maximum capacity of the brewing equipment is limited to 310 gallons. All equipment, activities, and storage are required to occur completely within the existing buildings, and no bottling, distribution, or off-site sales of brewed beer are permitted with this action. I just saw a typo.
Is that one?
If you feel like you'd add, if the Commission feels like it would benefit the project to add additional conditions on the, on the decision?
No, I didn't, I didn't see that one about the 300.
Well, there's also, I just want to add, for the Commission's education, Public Works Department Conditions Appeal 18 limits the water usage for brewery operations to 3,350 gallons per year. I don't know if that's the limitation you're looking for, but we did put that on there.
Thank you for pointing that out.
So Conditions 13, 14, 15, and 18, all are limiting factors in the overall production and scale of the brewery operations.
Okay. Maybe if it becomes a brew pub that you can't have darts, unless they're rubber tipped.
Well, I definitely agree with everything that Commissioner Sweeney said. I think that it is, it's not so much what is inside, it's really that it just fits within what the parameters that we've set. It doesn't make a difference that there's not a restaurant concept yet in place or already existing. They're actually doing things on the right track and getting this licensing done before they open up for business, which is to be commended. So I also can offer my support for this project. Is there any other comments that anyone would like to make, or do we have a motion?
I moved that we determine the existing mitigated, negative declaration on supplemental agenda, fully analyze and mitigate the impacts of the proposed project, and meet the requirements of sequel. Accept the required findings and approve the use permit for the proposal to add a brewery operation as an accessory use to the Las Argos Hotel on 3.83 acres located at 1915 Main Street in the Service Commercial zoning district.
Second.
Vice Chair Kissner?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Cobenstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Chair Parker?
Yes. Thank you very much. Moving on to our next agenda item, this is a design review and parcel map for 601 Fulton Lane. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Parker. My applicant was here. Hopefully, they're in the hallway. Pavy's Brad here? Okay, okay, I think-
Perfect.
I think we're okay. In November 2014, the City Council approved the applicant's request to subdivide an existing 14.13 acre parcel into two parcels, one consisting of 13.63 acres in area, and the second parcel consisting of a half acre, which is required by the general plan. Typically, parcel map approval would go before the Planning Commission for approval. However, in the case of this, it went to the City Council because of a consistency issue between the general plan and zoning ordinance relating to septic, which is discussed in the staff report. Based on the council's previous approval of the subdivision, staff feels this parcel map modification and design review is appropriate for consideration by the Planning Commission. The applicant wishes to modify the previously approved parcel map in order to make the half acre parcel easier developed, to develop. As approved, the newly created half parcel is rectangular in shape with approximate dimensions of 105 feet by 208 feet. As modified, the half acre parcel would be more of a square shape with an approximate dimension of 140 by 156 feet. The larger parcel on 601 Fulton Lane would remain 13.63 acres. Approval of this revised parcel map would officially rescind and replace the previous parcel map approval. The applicant is also seeking design review approval to construct a new 7,624-square-foot, one-story, single-family residence with a detached guest unit and office. The project would include approximately 1,489 square feet of unconditioned space for entertaining area and a four-car garage on 13.63 acre property. The proposed new single-story home would have a maximum height of 22 feet 6 inches. However, a majority of the structure would be only about 14 feet. The exterior would be finished with a variety of materials, including smooth stucco, horizontal wood siding, aluminum frames, copper fascia flashing, and rough-cut sandstone. There are no floor area ratio maximums in the A-20 district, and the project meets all required setbacks and other development standards. It should be noted that a north-south connection between Pratt Avenue and Star Avenue has been identified as a right-of-way preserve for future collector's street in the 1993 general plan. This identified right-of-way preserve runs right along the western border of the project site and would be, and is removed from forthcoming consideration in the 2035 general plan. So that is not in the upcoming general plan. The Planning Commission should consider if this right-of-way preserve along the western border of the project site should require dedication from the applicant to the city. Dedication has not been conditioned at this time. Staff feels that the appropriate parcel map and design review findings can be made and recommends approval of the project as proposed, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Are there any questions for staff at this time? Seeing none, I'm going to open up the public hearing and invite the applicant to come forward.
Hey, guys. Aaron, you told me to come here at 7:30. I trusted everything he said up until that point. They were wonderful to work with. It was a good experience for us, collaborative, and I just thank you for that. We are here. I'm Jeff Zimmerman, the architect of Zimmerman Associates. My associate, Nick Miller, is here. Client's Brad Oldenbrook, and Turner Askew are here as well, and they'll speak in a minute. I'm just going to kind of walk you through. I like to keep this brief, and I just encourage you to ask any question you have before you close down, and we just can't say anything. So with that, we also have some new visuals, and I'm not sure, Aaron, if they got the latest colors. Yeah, the original staff report, the original submittal, we've kind of tweaked it a little bit. We've kind of softened it with some colors, and I'd like to show you those. Maybe better quality than what you're looking at also. So we're going to kind of start backwards here, too. We're going to start at 601. I'd like to kind of start at 603 and work my way back, but I think we're aligned at 601. So we located the building in kind of the centroid of the lot, basically. It's located in the middle of a beautiful new vineyard that are just babies right now, but they're going to be beautiful soon. We tried to design the building to take advantage of all its natural attributes of the site. It's a wonderful place to live. We tried to design the building for everybody in mind, for the privacy of the user, and also for, to kind of play it down to the neighborhood as well. So as Aaron said, it's a one-story building. It goes up as high as 22 and 1/2 feet, the highest point, but it's generally 14 feet. We call this our Prairie Modern, which is kind of a play on Frank, but it works with many of his principles. Horizontal lines, the building is really kind of outreaches into the environment to get that indoor-outdoor experience that we love here so much, but it also helps the building sit on the property nicely. It has expansive views to the southwest, which would be the right-hand side, and we purposely aligned the building with like a privacy wall at the top of the building there. You can see where we didn't want to expose the people in the outdoor environment with the path, as well as the people on the inside looking at the path. So we've tried to make it very private for everybody in concern. I'd like now, if Nick could walk up.
Oh, if you could talk on the microphone.
They're just, yeah, but those pictures are a little whiter. We kind of altered the colors for that. So if, Nick, you could take the first one. We have three photographs here that show the existing condition and what the condition is going to change to from the different vantage points. We have two shots from Fulton Road Lane, excuse me, which is approximately 540 feet to the closest elevation of this house. So if you could walk, kind of just walk that around so they can kind of see. So there's a little yellow-orange cone that shows where the picture's being taken from, looking at the building. If I'm boring you, you can tell me to stop if you know enough. Just tell me. I'm going to just, I got this one here. Okay, Nick? Next one? This is another shot. Another shot from Fulton Lane, kind of rendering the same kind of feel.
Thank you.
I'd also like to introduce the color palette.
Grace, are you happy right now that you get to touch the color palette?
Oh, yeah. It's a, I just wish it was scratch and sniff, too. All right, all right. Good, good. We did something right. Good. The, so that palette, like I said, has darkened up a little bit. The building was more on the white side. It's kind of softened with the sand. We're trying to use, you know, natural qualities of the site, you know, local stone that's called rattlesnake, which I thought was kind of fun, a cedar, and a sandy stucco. So I think that lays that out pretty well. So. Brad, is there something else you'd like to talk about?
Sure. I could wrap it up.
Okay. I'm going to introduce Brad Oldenbrook.
Perfect, thank you.
He's our client, and he'll be here to answer any questions you might have. I'll stand behind him to support him and answer questions.
Thanks, Jeff. Brad Oldenbrook, applicant. I just had a couple dates, and just, I think we all know the history. We haven't been able to be in front of you guys yet, though. We purchased this property back in May of 2014, and then November 2014, we submitted for the subdivision, which threw us real quickly into a very active discussion with our neighbors. And, you know, our desire just reiterated was to do something, you know, here that would, you know, be in full support of the neighbors and be something that, you know, not a huge impact and change what we feel, you know, is one of the best lanes, one of the great streets, and has a lot of history, you know, in Fulton Lane representing St. Helena. So anyway, we got through that process with the one lot, and then came back in October 2015, then with the design review, some middlemen working on that again with neighbors and working out designs, stuff like that. So just, again, repeating our desire to, and I hope we've done a good job in meeting with the neighbors. We've had onsite meetings with everyone, hearing and talking about sort of what the high points are, especially our two neighbors on Fulton Lane and just back. And so we've, yeah, just hope that we've, we feel like we've succeeded. We've gotten some good feedback already, and obviously, just as a reflection of our desire, that's how we'd like to move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this agenda item?
Hi, I'm Dave Brotmark, 0503 Fulton Lane. Our property is adjacent on the east side of the property you are reviewing tonight. We've had several meetings with the developer concerning the half-acre parcel and the plans for the house on that parcel. That's the 603 Fulton, but they're connected. I'm pleased to say that, for the most part, the plans for that parcel do reflect those discussions, and I don't have any comments on that parcel, but want to thank the developer for listening to us, to the neighbors, for that 603 parcel. You're now talking about 601 parcel. I do, however, have two comments relative to discussions tonight with both parcels, primarily the 601 that's before you now. Firstly, there is a very important drainage ditch entirely on this parcel that protects our property and the amended list property from flooding and heavy rains. The city this year cleaned out this ditch, which is now already overgrown. Given the state of the city currently, I would like to suggest that as part of this approval, the developer be required to improve this drainage ditch so that the city does not have to clean it out regularly. There was actually a conversation during the flood control discussions to alleviate this problem by running a complete flood control channel underneath Fulton Lane so that this ditch would not be necessary. City at the time did not have the money to do that, and that was never completed, although there was a design review of it. So we're dependent totally on this one ditch that goes around our property, around amended list, and then down Carpenter's property line, and empties out into the flood control channel. That was our $13 million flood control channel, so it moves water to that channel. So, again, I'd like to suggest, as part of this approval, the developer be required to improve this drainage ditch so that the city doesn't have to do it. Perhaps it could be as simple as a cement culvert that would prevent the growth of plants that now invade this ditch. As you can see on some of your plans you are reviewing tonight, the flow of water from this parcel goes directly towards that fragile ditch. So this parcel's going to increase water flow to that ditch. Please require this ditch to be substantially improved. Secondly, while the developer was very forthcoming with his plans for 603 Fulton half-acre parcel, which we congratulated him on, we've only just now seen the plans for the 13-acre parcel at 601 Fulton. So it's very hard to comment on these plans with such a short lead time and no prior discussions with neighbors.
You can continue.
While the developer was quite forthcoming on the smaller parcel, I know they were delayed on the larger one, and we've not had the same attention paid to the second and much larger parcel. Incidentally, the permit you are reviewing tonight states that there is nothing on the parcels, and that's not true, as they have been planted to vines, which we applaud. The vines have been planted by the applicant. So thanks for your thoughtful consideration tonight, and that ditch is very vital to us. Thank you.
Kathy Brotmark, 503 Fulton Lane, and my main reason for speaking is actually to support the project. I would like to say, when this process began, we, as neighbors, were very concerned because it is a very quiet country lane, and we feared McMansions and possibly multiple McMansions, and the name of the developer was using was Fulton Lane Estates, and I thought, this is not the street for any kind of estates. But Brad and Turner met with the neighbors. We had multiple meetings. I feel they really, really did listen, so I'm actually here speaking in support. And my only concerns are now for the people who might end up living in this home, because although it's gorgeous and the views are very open, I fear for their privacy, because I don't know what's happening with the Hunter project, but they could have a large development right in their backyard, and I guess I'm just giving a tip to, when you guys move into the landscaping aspect of this, you might not want it to be quite so open, and you might want a little more screening for the people living there, as well as the people who might be living in new homes that haven't been built yet. I do have a question, though, just like, single-family home, why does it need to be 7,000 square feet? I just don't get that. And why does it need four garages? I just don't get that. But that's just a personal thing, and in general, I am in support, and my concern has always been to maintain the character of our city, and especially these quiet country lanes. And I do feel that they listened and we're in support, basically.
I'm Lou Levine, and my wife and I built a home that's now at 453 Fulton Lane, which is two doors away from David and Kathy's house, going right at the end of the street. And I also, and we also applaud the builders and the architect for being sensitive to the neighbors. We completely share the comments that David made related to the drainage. And drainage, as we learned in our own property and went through extensive work on, is hugely important in this area because of that whole area in general, and needs to be handled very, very carefully. We applaud the builder on putting in the olive trees along the property line near Kathy and David's. The comment I'd make is olive trees don't like their feet wet. We learned that the hard way. And the, a couple of those trees that the developers have planted have already shown the effects of that, because they're right along nearby where that ditch is that David mentioned. And I mention that not to be problematic, but that ditch operating- And I mentioned that not to be problematic, but that ditch operating properly is really important. Further add to that, in the event that that ditch doesn't operate properly, and I'll refer to it as a ditch that David has described in detail, which goes all the way back to the flood control project, the water then continues down on the, I'll call it the northwestern side of Fulton Lane, the opposite side of the street in simple terms. And what happens when it does that is it continues down in front of David and Kathy's house, in front of their next-door neighbor, and ultimately in front of our house. And then at the far side of our house where the, actually, end of the city street is, because then it becomes private property when you go into Carpenter Ranches, is that, which is all vineyard. It becomes a swale that goes all the way back again to the city flood control business and gets its way out. But the point of it is, if this ditch that David referred to doesn't work 100%, it's going to find its way down the street, down that unmaintained swale on the other side of Fulton Lane across the front of the next three houses, and will back up and cause fun for all of us. So, the point of it is, is that the drainage is hugely important, and we encourage that to be considered very carefully as this is done, and that there may be maintenance and a solution found to the issue David has, and that I recognize the city issues, but that entire drainage on the far side of Fulton Lane is something that would need attention. Last comment I'd make is we applaud the way the design is in many respects. We are concerned about the front parcel. In one comment, in terms of screening on the side most near the city, we would suggest that have further screening because we are sensitive to all of our neighbors, even beyond some of the screening that was talked about. And we also would add that the tall peak that is on it being a lighter color will draw attention to it and make it look somewhat taller right by the street. And most people who have taller structures on that street have done them in a darker color. Those are our comments. We're generally supportive of the project, but we are very concerned particularly about the drainage and particularly about any appearance of height. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd just like to direct the...
I was going to say, can you please let us know where this ditch is?
I'm not exactly sure. Steve might be able to comment on that. I just wanted to direct you to conditions 21 and 22 that address drainage and drainage plans and all that will need to be approved by Public Works.
I mean, is it this very, can we get the map actually that looks like this up?
Do you see the bright yellow, which is the smaller parcel?
Mm-hmm.
It's the gray line just to...
It runs...
Just to the east.
It runs this way, and then that way, and then that. The circle through all of these parts. Right.
No runoff will be allowed to infiltrate other properties.
That's easy to say. But that ditch is in trouble right now. And the city came out and cleaned it. I cleaned it in the past myself, Vincent Mendel and I. Because our house was flooded once, the drive was flooded once before we owned the house. And the reason that was flooded is that this ditch was clogged, and the water came across, this is our house here, and the water came across the vineyard instead of going through the ditch. It backed up, came in our garage. So, it's vital that this ditch be supported in some way other than the dirt that it is today because it's overgrown already at the right...
Perfect, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this agenda item?
I'd just add that there is a drawing that was in the developer's set that at least we received that's Google Maps over at you that showed the swale that I'm referring to further downstream that goes also over to the...
Do we have that image, Jim?
It's not on the landscape. It's something in Google Maps.
Is it this one? Is it this one, sir?
You're getting the right zone.
Maybe someone should say that into a microphone so people at home will know where they can find...
Well, I'm going to try to get the image up.
Well, okay, but that wasn't heard. That wasn't in the microphone, so...
I don't believe we have the aerial.
Okay.
There's a Google, there's a Google area that shows the swale and the ditch.
So, there's a... Okay, so there's a ditch across the street on the north side.
Well, and to confirm, is this the image? Because then it becomes very clear. There's not a page number. I can't reference the page number, too.
But it is a Google Earth document.
Yes, Google Earth.
Okay.
So, this is the ditch we're referring to right here at this...
Yes.
So, for everyone at home, we've confirmed that the ditch is across the street from the homes on Fulton Lane.
No.
Yeah. No, Chair Person.
The swale. The ditch, this ditch is on, on whose property, Noah?
On their property.
It's on their property.
Could I ask a question, Steve?
I can clarify what the ditch is if...
Well, 20 and...
Okay, excuse me.
Well, 20 and, 21 and 22 and the one package, and 13, and I don't remember the other one in the second package, handle this.
Right, yes. So, let me, let me just first clarify where the ditch is, and then I will speak to the conditions that we wrote, sort of to the project, and why we conditioned the way we did. So, the aerial, which on Google Maps is included in the staff report, so it's in the packet. It doesn't appear to be on projector, right? So, it, right, the ditch is along the north side of Fulton, west of the project, and then at the project, east side of the project, it goes under the road, and then along the eastern project boundary, and then it turns along these existing houses and heads down towards the river. I don't know if it's, if I can see it on there.
Is this the, is it the drainage pattern?
Yes.
Is that... There's a drainage pa, pattern image.
What's that? There, there, that one.
All right, perfect.
Oh, Noah's got it.
Yeah, that's what...
Yeah, that's, that's the Google, yeah, okay.
That's it. Where?
Yeah. So, it runs along here.
Yes.
And jogs and connects to the flood control project.
Okay.
Goes out that way.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, and the rest of it is prepared, if I can.
You know, if you can do it in the microphone, because people at home can't hear you.
If you, well, it's going to be tricky without pointing. You can point.
If it doesn't go in here. If it doesn't go in there, it goes, oh, line, right, right there. That's it.
They're saying that's the end of Fulton Lane.
And then what it does is it follows down at the end, parallel to the very end of Fulton Lane.
It follows its way back to the river. No, not all the way down where the city street ends.
That's where the city street ends.
Right there, now turn.
It crosses through.
Right there, keep going. That's the swale I'm discussing.
Okay.
All right? So, it continues down Fulton Lane and does what I just said. If the ditch David's referring to doesn't work, just so everybody understands.
Okay.
So, just so I can clarify, the city-maintained portion is this piece along Fulton around this side. Where does it? That's the city-maintained piece. This piece out here is not city-maintained.
Okay.
And just from my own understanding, the ditch that the neighbors are asking to be maintained is 100% within the developer's property, correct, the applicant's property? There's no easement issue? This is 100% within their property?
I thought it was between two properties.
I mean, that's a huge difference. That's what I'm saying, that if we can't condition something that's between.
So, it's in an easement. Honestly, looking at the, without looking at the map again, I don't recall if it's on...
Is it on the waterline easement?
Entirely on the property of the subdivision or on the adjacent property. I am, I am not sure.
And I would just add, if it is in an easement, the easement will dictate maintenance requirements.
It's in the easement to the city, and the city is responsible for its maintenance. And so, the conditions, as Commissioner Kissner mentioned a second ago, I'm going to go back here on my, on my PDF to where the conditions are.
21.
Right.
21 and 22.
So, yes, so the conditions are written 21 and 22. 21 requires drainage is routed to prevent inundation neighboring properties, and the grading or site improvement plans shall show how two-year and 10-year storm flows shall be infiltrated on-site or diverted to prevent inundation neighboring properties. And then 22 goes on to require the applicant to implement a stormwater control plan as required by, bear with me, Bay Area, BASMA, Bay Area Stormwater Management Agency Association Post-Construction Manual, which is, is the low-impact development stuff that requires reducing impervious areas, requiring infiltration, requiring, you know, stormwater runoff to go over naturally vegetated areas before it runs to a drainage swale, all with the intent of not increasing existing runoff.
I have a question. Was it determined that this project would increase the runoff?
So, they comply with BASMA. So, I don't, I mean, they're infiltrating their two-year, 10-year, they're mitigating for their two-year, 10-year storm flows. So, their reports show no increase to that ditch in those events. Now, there are bigger events, 50-year, 100-year events.
But they have nothing to do with this project. I mean, they're, is that accurate?
Well, that, I mean, something like, a 50-year, 100-year event is a major event.
But it isn't a house's fault, basically.
Right, and that's, and that's something that has to be handled on a regional basis or a subregional basis, not based on one project.
But that's what I'm asking, though, is the presence of this project increase the potential damage from these events, or would they be happening anyway, even if that project weren't there?
The increase in this project and those kind of events would be very minor.
And if I'm understanding the question, and I think they're valid points, but what the neighbors are asking is to shift, is to have the applicant be responsible for maintenance, but it's already based on the easement that the city's are responsible. So, I don't...
That's right.
How we can shift responsibility from the city to the applicant.
I understand the issue, and I worry about that only because frankly, between you and me, the city has not maintained that ditch. And we had them, they made it this year for the first time in years because they were worried about El Nino and the flood. As you know, the city did a great job of, of flood control issues ahead of the expected storms. We're lucky they weren't as severe as they might have been. But in, we've been there 21 years, and this is the first time the city has come out, maybe the second time, city has come out for that ditch. One time, Vincent Mendel and I paid our own money to have a backhoe come out and clean it out. We were so concerned about it. So, I don't know what the proper procedure is to do, and I, I'm not trying to burden them with something that isn't theirs, but I'm telling you, the city's not taking care of this, and it could easily cause major flooding on several properties on Fulton Lane.
Is there anything in the plan? Because I don't see it, but I would ask the department to assist. Is there anything that's going to obstruct the neighbors from continuing to go out and clean out the ditch? I mean, I clean out the drainage ditch in front of our home every time it rains.
This thing is four and a half feet deep.
No, I got it, but I'm just...
10 feet wide.
My question is, this project doesn't make that any less accessible. It's not any more fun, or I don't mean to mitigate that that's an issue.
Well, it's the city's responsibility. It's not our responsibility.
Right, but since this project...
I'm telling you, the city isn't doing it.
I think what we're trying to say is that we don't think it's related to the approval of the parcel map and this design review.
Unless this design impacts it, and it's put in walls or that you no longer can get access.
There's a gate, a fence, or whatnot.
But if this project were causing an increase in the, in the problem, then it would seem to, the onus would seem to fall on him. But it sounds like that if the city isn't going to do it, or if you want to do something besides the city, that the neighbors could get together and all get together to do it rather than have it be on one, one person's...
I would just say, the need for the city to maintain the ditch and the, the lack of prior years of maintenance are a separate issue from the review of this project.
Unfortunately, I agree with that. So, unless you have something to add that's related to the project, I'm going to have to close the public hearing.
Nope, that's it. I just hope that we can get the city to take care of this if that's their responsibility because it's not happening. Right now, the ditch is totally overgrown again.
Perfect. Thank you. And with that, Jim, I don't know if you noticed, I did close the public hearing and going to invite Commissioner discussion to continue.
Why don't you go?
I'm happy to listen. I guess I would say I don't have any real issues with this project. The moving around of the parcel lines slightly, I don't think creates an impact. I think this discussion about the ditch has been interesting, but if the property owner is not creating the issue, I don't see how you can shift, even in the absence of an easement, how you can shift or condition a development on them taking care of the ditch. It's, you know, it's a public function, and the city should be doing it. I do, I like the little bit toned-down palette. I think it's nice. I think Gray should have the material board.
You guys should take those home.
Yeah. No. It is, it is a big house. I mean, one of the questions was, why is such a big house? But it's also got a huge buffer all the way around it, and the condition of no further subdivision, I think, is important.
Yeah, I agree with what Commissioner Coburnstein has said, and I just, I can't imagine having to clean 7,000 square feet either. But anyway, that's, I, I think it's beautiful. I think you've thought of thing, you've thought of, you know, really been diligent and trying to think of things. I'm concerned about neighbor, you know, their concerns, but I don't think that's your issue, too. I think it's a great opportunity for the neighborhood to even get more cohesive and work together to figure out what to do, either lobbying the city or doing something on your own. But I don't think that's the property owner's responsibility. So, I, I support this. I have, I just think it's an amazingly beautiful house.
I like the project a lot, and I, I agree with what my fellow commissioners say. I would like to say to the neighbors that being as I was part of all that mess that went on for years, I really, 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 I don't understand why we never got what we were going to end up with. So, I, I really want you to know that I feel for you. I don't know what to do about it. We fought with that for, as you know, it's a long time. Anyway, I'll approve the, I would approve the project. I like it. I think it's nice. And thank you very much for bringing these beautiful boards.
I have nothing further to add.
I don't have much more to add other than just to reiterate Commissioner Kissner and like this, unfortunately, the ditch isn't really related to this project, but it is something that the city should address and get a lobby group together and work on that. And if we could have a motion.
Oh, could I? I actually forgot to ask something. Can I still?
Is it necessary?
Well, I don't know. It asked us to, well, maybe not. I just, when we were asked, we were going to consider the right-of-way preserve. Is that something we're, and I didn't know how to do that. It says the planning commission should consider if this right-of-way preserve area along the western border of the project site should require dedication from the applicant to the city. I mean, if we're...
The, the previous subdivision did not require it, and the proposed general plan that's coming up on the agenda does not identify that as a future right-of-way.
So, I just can ignore that. Okay, thank you.
Perfect. Do we have a motion? No, it's just for the, we're going to do, there's a second one for 603. Yeah.
I'll make a motion. I move that this project be exempt from the requirements of secret pursuant to Section 15315, which exempts the subdivision of four or fewer parcels, and Section 15303, which exempts the construction or conversion of small structures, including single-family residences, garages, pools, et cetera. And that we accept the required findings and approve the revised tentative parcel map and design review for the proposed subdivision and new construction at 601 Fulton Lane.
Second.
Commissioner Sweeney? I'm sorry, Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Kissner?
Yes.
Commissioner Coburnstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Chair Parker?
Yes. Moving on to an eerily similar item, a 603 Fulton Lane, if we could get a staff report.
Yes, thank you, Chair Person Parker. The applicant is seeking design review approval to construct a new 3,795-square-foot, one-story single-family residence with an approximately 370-square-foot guest suite, 439-square-foot garage, and outdoor entertaining and kitchen area. The proposed new single-story home would have a maximum height of 25 feet at the highest ridge line. The exterior would be finished with a variety of materials, including vertical cedar, horizontal shipwreck, and metal siding, aluminum windows, concrete walls, and a standing seam metal roof. For lots less than two acres in the A20 district, the development regulations and floor area ratio shall be the same for those in the low-density one-acre district. As the subject property is only half-acre in size, the LR1A development standards apply. As far as floor area ratio is concerned, a half-acre parcel has a maximum FAR .204, which would allow a maximum gross floor area of 4,443 square feet, excluding the 400 square feet of second-unit space and 200 square feet of garage space, or 5,043 square feet total. The applicant is proposing an approximately 3,795-square-foot home. I already said that part already. Basically, the square footage ends up at about 4,604 square feet total, or 439 square feet less than the maximum permitted. With the, with the 200-square-foot FAR exemption for covered parking, the project's gross square footage is only 4,404 square feet. The guest unit and garage setback are approximately 25 feet from the front property line, while in the... property line, while the majority of the main structure is set back even farther, fifty-seven feet from the property line. The project meets all the development standards required in the LR1A district. The proposed home would be located on a half-acre, located near the center of a parcel, and setback at greater distances than required from the front and rear property lines. While the proposed home is quite large, it is only one-story in height and is located in a rural area where large homes on larger-than-average parcels are common. There are no properties near the proposed project site that would in any way be negatively affected from the development of the project at this location, and for these reasons, staff believes that the proposed project is consistent with the required design review findings and recommends approval of the project, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Are there any questions of staff at this time?
I have a question. Something in my head tells me that there's rules about accessory buildings being in front of the principal building, which is the case here with the garage. We had a similar project, but there was a connection. There was a breezeway connection that allowed it. Is this?
This is the same, and there's no prohibition against it. There's prohibition against two or more. Second units aren't considered accessory structures.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? With that, I would like to open up the public hearing for six oh three Fulton Lane. All right, perfect.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Lou Levine for setting the bar so high in his house. Beautiful home. Thank you. This is an entirely different animal. This house had to fit with the neighborhood contextually. Its presence on the road and its way it weaves with all the other buildings was a very important element in the design of this. If Van White could come up again, distant cousin of Anna, and so I don't think, yeah, I don't think this was in your cemental package, and it really illustrates the typology that we use for this. It's basically a white farmhouse with a new skin around it and modern elements that you wouldn't find in a typical farmhouse. So I think that is a very elegant way of kind of showing what we were trying to do with that.
Thank you.
I don't have a whole lot to add. If you have any questions, I think...
All right. Are there any questions for the applicant? All right.
New, prettier renderings, but I think the ones you got are just fine. Do you want to see those?
I'm fine if my fellow commissioners would like to see. Except for the aesthetic change, I mean, there's no other material change.
None, no.
All right, perfect. Would anyone else like to speak on this agenda item?
Lou Levine again, from four five three Fulton. Directionally, we're supportive of this and the way the appearances are. I'd make the comment about the color scheme and the fact that anything that's a lighter color stands out, but that's obviously personal choice. In terms of drainage, one should bear in mind, this property, prior to it being deconstructed, was totally an old vineyard, which actually was tagged by the county of Napa for not being maintained by the owners prior to the current developers. And obviously, a vineyard is a pretty absorbent sight, and there's no buildings or hardscape on it. When we talk about the infamous ditch that David discussed, obviously, hardscape is going to have to produce water, or is going to have runoff that has to find its way off the property. And so when the question was asked whether this or the other project impacts the easement that may or may not exist related to this ditch, I would just urge you to consider, hardscape's not very absorbent, and that water's going to have to find a home, and it's going to have to access that waterway that David was discussing, whatever it's called and whoever's directly responsible. I think it should be very clear, because as I said earlier, runoff in this area is a very big deal, and it comes from far more than just here if it does not operate properly. I'd also remind everyone, I trust that the planning team has looked at this, is that the city, actually, the road right-of-way is actually a wider part than it appears to be because it's a one-lane road, but actually, the city right-of-way cuts into all the properties on this side of the road, which is where all the houses are in that area of Fulton Lane. And so when one talks about setbacks, that has to be considered as well, because that's part of what is actually city, and then you setback from that undeveloped piece that's actually city right-of-way. And I trust that the planning team has evaluated all that when they talk about the setbacks. The setbacks are really important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a brief thing that I wasn't even going to bring up until the architect mentioned that this is kind of in keeping, size-wise, with the average home on our street. That really is not true, and I actually really do like the design of the home, and we are in support of the project. But I do want them to realize, and I want the city to keep in mind, we are right next door to this house. Our house is sixteen hundred square feet. The next house is about twelve hundred square feet. It's a very old, two-bedroom farmhouse. Ours is a three-bedroom, Rand-style house built in nineteen seventy-nine, very modest size. Johnson's on the far side, on the other side, east side of this property, is just about three thousand square feet, and then the Beards' house is probably about two thousand square feet. So the norm seems to be, single-family homes are becoming four thousand, five thousand, six thousand square feet, and I just want to keep in mind that we want to make sure that when we look at new development, not just this one, but what other ones down the road, that there isn't a new norm of a single-family home being five thousand square feet. And so that's normal, and that's average. I think we need to look at the location and keep that in mind. So the average size of home on this street is well under three thousand square feet. So just keep that in mind, but we're happy with the design, so we actually do support it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this agenda item? See, now I'm going to close the public hearing and invite Commissioner Discussion.
Anyone? Bealer? Bealer?
You know, I would say, my understanding is that there's been a lot of outreach to the neighbors, and that the neighbors in general feel good about the design. I agree with the hardscape issue, and I think, you know, all kind of is part and parcel with the drainage on that segment of Fulton Lane, which, however moves into this home, who I believe in the audience is correct, will be part of that group that needs to manage what's, where water's going and how it's running off. But again, it's not part of this conversation. I also respect the idea of what is a new normal in a house, and not trying to set new benchmarks for St. Helena, but again, this home is, falls within our current standards in terms of size, and I think it's appropriate. There is, because of the proximity to the other home and the subdivision, there's a lot of land around this house. I think it looks appropriate, and I think by the breaking up of the mass through the various structures, that it doesn't, it doesn't have the feel, to me, of an oversized house, given it's a large lot. I understand that historically, homes have been smaller, and there's a move back to tiny homes, so I mean, we don't pendulum swing, but this house, I think, is in keeping, and I think it's beautifully designed.
Yeah, I would add, as far as the design, a lot of the impact of the structure is actually felt by what's behind it, you know. It is kind of narrow at the sides, which I think minimizes maybe the visual impact in the neighborhood. So I think they did a good job of breaking up the mass of the structures. It could have a much different appearance if they hadn't done that.
I agree with both my fellow commissioners here, and I believe that the water problems will probably be solved by, I think there's three, at least three places in the public works conditions of approval that will handle the hardscape and stuff and the water runoff. So I'm in favor of the project.
Is that accurate, Steve?
Yeah, okay, so...
They have the same conditions for the two and ten-year, and the...
This one's different because of the hardscape and stuff.
Oh, yeah, I agree with the other commissioners who have spoken, but I also feel a lot of, you know, I need the wah-wah-wambulance when it comes to the large size of the homes in St. Helena. I've been here forty years, and it was just a tiny little cow town, or three thousand people here when I came here. And so, you know, these are, these are really big, massive homes compared to what was there, but, you know, I'm old and new things are happening. So I support the project, but I do sympathize with the sense that things are changing in ways that are hard to accept sometimes.
I am in agreement with my fellow commissioners, and I'm in full support of this project. I don't think there's really much more to add, if we could have a motion, so we can get to the general plan.
Let's talk some more about this.
Actually, you know what? Let's talk about this a little bit more. So what kind of paint are you using now? Do we have a motion, please?
This project is exempt from the requirements of secret pursuant to Section fifteen three fifteen, which exempts the subdivision of four or fewer parcels, and Section fifteen three oh three, which exempts the construction or conversion of small structures, including single-family residence garages, pools, et cetera. We accept the findings and approve the revised tentative parcel map and design review for the proposed subdivision and new construction at six oh one Fulton Lane.
Second.
Six oh three. Just to correct, it's six oh three.
Vice Chair Kissner? Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Koberstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Chair Parker?
Yes. Thank you very much. Yeah, and I'm so sorry for everyone here, for the general plan. I think we're going to take a brief five-minute break and come back at seven twenty-five, and then reconvene.
Since it's state houses, they had an agenda that they pushed through, a lot of persons, judiciary.
All right. Going to reconvene our planning commission meeting and move on to our study session to discuss the two thousand, April two thousand sixteen draft general plan. If we could have a staff report from Victor?
Yes. Madam, madam chair members of the commission, this obviously is something of a momentous item. This is a project that's been in process for quite some time. What I like to do is spend a few minutes just kind of setting the context. I think it's important to do. It's a big enough item, obviously. And I'm going to cover some of what's in the staff report, but once, I don't think it hurts to reiterate. So starting out, I think the best place really is history, in terms of where this project has been. And it does have a long history, dating back to two thousand six, two thousand seven. If you look at all the various committees, Grace Kissner, for instance, is a name that appears on pretty much most of them, but we're looking at a process that began about ten years ago. The general plan, actually, as a document, was first complete, there was a draft document, back in the summer, the late summer of two thousand and ten, and essentially, it was, it was ready to go. It had been reviewed by the commission, had been passed on to council, the EIR had been complete. Consultants, at that point, had spent well over a million dollars on the document, and for a number of reasons, really doesn't, no reason to get into them in detail. But the city ultimately decided not to move forward. There were concerns raised. I know the drought issue was one and a number of others, but the long and the short of it is, although the general plan was essentially teed up for action, it was decided the plan needed more work. And where it went from there was a series of study sessions held at pretty much the city council level, and eight to ten of those occurred essentially from early two thousand eleven up to two thousand fourteen, fifteen. And during that time period, there were several iterations of the general plan created. So you had, you had a kind of a process. It was primarily at the council level, a series of study sessions with a series of incremental changes to the, to the general plan document. Those study sessions continued up until September, and that was really the last direction from council. And the document you have in front of you now is an April two thousand sixteen document, which essentially reflects what came out of that council direction, combined with some feedback from the EIR process, combined with simply staff going through with a fine-tooth comb and clearing up inconsistencies, making corrections, updating, et cetera. So at any rate, that's the context in terms of where we've been with this, and this is a little unusual. It's not every general plan, they can have a lengthy process, but it's not too often you have one that is ready to go, no actions on it, and then it sits kind of in hiatus for a number of years. this kind of feeling like jumping off a high dive in terms of acting on a general plan. The reality is even though they're not comprehensively updated that often, state law says they should be reviewed annually, and as part of that annual process, arguably, they should be updated annually. So, I think whether it's the commission or council in reviewing the document, if it's not perfect, it's not going to be perfect because that's really an impossibility in dealing with a policy document like this. But the fact is, you're just taking your best guess at this point in time. They're intended to be long-range, in this case, twenty years, but nobody has a crystal ball to say exactly what's going to work even five years from now. So, I think in the review of this, it's really important to not get into a situation where it's, you know, analysis paralysis, that really this is a living document and can be revisited and really is, it's up to staff and the commission to be sure that happens on a regular basis. And kind of the last thought in that same regard is for every, you know, month or week that goes by where this new general plan's not approved, the city's acting and is being served by the 93 plan, which really, if you were in the grocery store and buying produce, it would have, you know, exceeded its due date. I mean, technically, it was supposed to be done in 2010, and we're still working with it. So, all the more reason to get a new general plan in place. Moving on then to comparisons between the 93 document and the 2016 document. The staff report, in the staff report, it took some pains to highlight, I guess, what you'd call the major differences. I mean, this really is the policy issue before the planning commission and council. I did provide, and you should have up on the dais, a comparison between kind of the latest iteration, the one I referenced before, the September 2015 version, and the April 2016 version. And that's good information to have, and it kind of tells you where we've most recently been. But the bottom line is, and the key issue really is, what are the differences between the 93 plan and the new plan? And is the wording in the new plan as proposed adequate and sufficient for what the city needs and needs to do? I can touch on some of those key changes just to highlight some of the important differences. And I think it's worth doing because the 2016 plan really has some substantial material advantages to the city as compared to the 93 plan that we're operating under. And one of the biggest, and probably the biggest, is the creation of this new residential zone, the low-medium-density district. Currently, the city has a medium-density zone that applies to the bulk of its single-family neighborhoods, which is very unusual, and that zone allows from five to sixteen units an acre. Typically, you're going to have two or three zones in that range, and in this city, there's only one zone. That's being essentially corrected with this general plan, and we're creating a new zone, not to imaginatively title, but it's called the low-medium zone, that substantially reduces the density allowed for the balance of the city and with the end result that the density and the designation now actually fits the existing land use. And at least on paper, we're talking about a substantial amount of land here, roughly 250 acres. Under the current 93 plan, you could build, it depends on what kind of assumptions you want to use, but you could easily build a thousand more units than there are currently existing easily under the 1993 plan as compared to the proposed 2016 plan. Another key issue is the one of economic sustainability. And this element really replaces the, I guess, what was called the tourism element in the 93 plan, and it makes a number of changes. It really adopts kind of a different philosophical approach to this push-and-pull balance of, you know, tourism and the community keeping its, you know, current small-town character. The element eliminates some of the limits, and frankly, from a staff standpoint, somewhat artificial limits that were on hotels and restaurants. And it replaces it with a concept that's fleshed out in the element. If you look at both the background wording and the policies, it was referred to in the general plan as sustainable tourism. And that, in a nutshell, in terms of how it's defined, essentially involves preserving the authentic small-town character while leveraging tourism to sustain a vibrant economy. So, essentially reaching for the best of both worlds. The public facilities element introduces all kinds of new languages that relates to water conservation as compared to the 93 element. The general plan now contains police and fire staffing ratios and response times, which frankly was something of significant oversight in the 93 plan, and is really critical in terms of budgeting and coming up with impact fees and a variety of other things. The new plan, in terms of public facilities, also addresses and takes into account the new flood control improvements that were referred to in the previous agenda item. And then just going to the circulation element, the biggest change here really revolves around the issue of street extensions. And in the 93 plan, it's simply presumed that the street extensions will occur. Obviously, it's unknown as to when, but presumably, it depends on funding. In the new general plan, a process has been added that before any street extension is made, and those street extensions are substantially similar to what's shown in the 93 plan really, except for the Pratt connection that was just referred to. There needs to be what amounts to a feasibility study that, or maybe the best characterized as a cost-benefit study, to look at the benefits of the extension, but then again, the impacts of that and balance all of that against the cost of making the road extension. So, those are the, and obviously, there are all kinds of other changes, and this only touches on three or four of the elements. But in summary, the 2016 plan offers much more from a community point of view than the 93 plan. Just like, as I mentioned, you have a summary of the earlier September plan and the April 2016 plan. Just kind of wrapping up here, I'd like to talk about, the commission did receive some correspondence, which you, I believe you were all sent directly by the Citizens Voice Group, sent from an attorney with Shoot Mahoney Weinberg. And really, the guts of what's in that correspondence is some suggested wording changes, primarily to Chapter Two and Chapter Three. Those changes revolve primarily around the issue and the question of tourism and that whole balancing, the issue of tourism and the character of St. Helena. And they're done in a red-line-strikeout format. And frankly, I think this is, it's a good constructive approach as opposed to somebody just saying, well, we don't like the way it's worded they're proposing, but they'd like to see as alternate wording. So, whether one agrees with the wording or not, I think it's a good attempt to become engaged and work cooperatively. I would like to point out, though, and I really do need to do this for the public record and the legal record, that the, kind of the letter that accompanies the proposed changes in a lot of ways is a typical letter from an attorney. And in the letter, the transmittal letter essentially asserts that the new general plan ignores and obscures residents' concerns over tourism. And it does this primarily by referring to the fact that the new general plan does not specifically reference a twenty-year-old phone survey that was done with the 93 plan, and then kind of goes from there to say that the new plan is not sensitive or reflective of this issue of tourism, the need to balance it. And I'd just like to make clear for the record that, as I mentioned, if you look at Chapter Three, the Economic Sustainability Plan, and as I mentioned in the staff report, this element really in a lot of ways steps in for what was called the tourism element of the 93 plan, has all kinds of language and policies, ten-plus pages and a whole number of policies, implementation measures, et cetera. And those are the very items where the edits are proposed by the Citizens Voice Group. So, just to make clear from, you know, a record point of view, the staff does not concur with the assertions made in the attorney's letter in terms of ignores and obscures and that it's inconsistent, et cetera. But staff definitely welcomes the specific proposed wording changes, and that gives everybody something to look at and to talk about. I'd like to then just kind of conclude stating this is a study session. The way we have this item moving forward, as the commission is aware, we're updating the EIR, and that process is near complete. We hope to publish the EIR at the end of this month or in early May. It'll then go out for a forty-five-day review, and then after that, we'll prepare a response to comments document. So, for all of those things to occur, that provides pretty much a healthy window or a substantial window of time for the commission to review this item. So, the commission should not feel compelled that they have to get through the document in any sort of rush or hurry, or definitely shouldn't feel compelled tonight to breeze through, you know, a substantial part of the document. So, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the commission has.
Perfect. Are there any questions for Victor?
About the, about questions about the whole...
About what he presented.
About what you just said.
Right. And no, I guess what I'm assuming is, once we've, once we get into a dialogue in this thing, we'll kind of move through element by element.
Yeah, so here, so for this one, I was hoping that we could move it element by element to keep it really conceptual, and if we are going to get into the more nitty-gritty of things, we focus it just on the goals, policy, and implementing actions, because that's really the gist, the power that's behind this. And I do just want to reiterate that this is a living document, so it's to be baseline constitutional style, and then it's flexible with the changing times. I would like to put a cap on tonight of 9:00 p.m. I know that's an hour and fifteen minutes. I am hoping that we will have a second study session, not at our next meeting, but the meeting after. And then we, either we might have one time for one more meeting, and then our last meeting will be our action meeting where we actually make a motion to move, to put things. But all of our suggestions that we have tonight, we can give suggestions to Noah and to Victor to implement in the draft that they have right now, and they can vet and see how they can work, and we can bring them back to see if we need to have further discussion on them on the next study session. So, there should be four times for us to get together to discuss this. Is that, is everyone okay with that? Okay.
So, I have a couple of questions before we start. And I have a comment before we start. I really like what you wrote, Victor, on page three, the last paragraph where you discussed this was a living document. I thought that is, I think that's excellent. And I think that that is going to be the guiding line for the way I want to look at this. I think we've been doing this, as you say, since 2006, and I think it's time that we don't try and remake it over and over and over. I also would like to say that I believe that the planning commission is supposed to review this at least once a year. And I think it's the planning commission. You said that the city, I believe that that's in our responsibility. And I would like to suggest that not do we, that maybe we pick certain elements that we look at throughout the year, because I think to do it once a year with twelve or thirteen elements is, it's, you just don't see it. And so, I would like to make that suggestion. And I would also like you to explain, or someone to explain to us, if we find something in the plan that needs to be changed in the review, how do we get that done? I mean, how do we get it on an agenda and get it done?
Well, it's my thought, the way this would work is the, you know, the commission would hear from the public, and the commission would then discuss the plan. And if there was an item that the commission, as a majority, felt needed to be changed, if the commission was able to come up with specific wording at the meeting either tonight or some future meeting, then that would go forward on to council, or it would go forward as part of the overall commission recommendation. Or alternately, if the commission feels that there is a problem or something that the commission would like to see amplified or alternately worded, then we could, the staff could go back, make some wording changes, and bring those back to you. So, I'm picturing it kind of working both ways, that the commission would identify sections that either specific wording changes, that the majority of the commission would then agree needed to be modified, or relatively clear specific direction as to what needs to be modified, and a majority would vote on that.
I don't think I made myself clear. I know, I agree that that's what we want to do now. What I'm saying is after this has been approved, and we do our annual review of the plan, how do we, how do we get that before whomever we need to get it before?
Yeah, Vice Chair Kistner, I'm happily, I'm happy to commit to ongoing review of the general plan, and it's my experience that communities often have four times a year quarterly where any general plan update, whether it's proposed by a citizen or directed by council or commission to make changes, are brought forward and reviewed and acted on on a quarterly basis by the general plan, or I mean, by the commission and ultimately city council. So, the mechanism to do so would probably be through the agenda forecasts that we've talked about, you know, if there's a specific issue or element, commission would direct staff to work on that, providing direction as to what the concern would be, and staff would work that into that annual review or the quarterly review process for the general plan.
How do we get it on the agenda?
We do it how we do anything on the agenda. You ask if it can be put on the agenda, the commission votes and says yes or no, and then it's put on the next agenda.
Would something of this importance, rather than it be, fit in when it could, could we just say on a biannual basis that we will review elements one through four and...
That's basically what I was saying.
Yeah, trying to have a calendar around that so that it's not so onerous and it's not so contentious.
And I also think that we see what's wrong as we work with the plans, with what we see on...
Right.
in the plan that needs to be changed in the review, how do we get that done? I mean, how do we get it on an agenda and get it done?
Well, it's my thought, the way this would work is the, you know, the Commission would hear from the public and the Commission would then discuss the, the plan. And if there was an item with, that the Commission as a majority felt needed to be changed, if the Commission was able to come up with specific wording at the meeting either tonight or some future meeting, then that would go forward on to council. Or it, it would go forward as part of the overall Commission recommendation. Or alternately, if the Commission feels that there is a problem or something that the Commission would like to see amplified or alternately worded, then we could, the staff could go back, make some wording changes and bring those back to you. So, so I'm picturing it kind of working both ways, that the Commission would identify sections that, that either specific wording changes, that the majority of the Commission would then agree needed to be modified, or relatively clear specific direction as to what needs to be modified and a majority would vote on that.
I, I don't think I made myself clear. I, I know, I, I agree that that's what we want to do now. What I'm saying is after this has been approved and we do our annual review of the, the plan, how do we, how do we get that before whomever we need to get it before?
Yeah, Vice Chair Kishner, I'm happily, I'm happy to commit to ongoing review of the general plan. And it's my experience that communities often have four times a year quarterly that where there were any general plan update, whether it's proposed by a citizen or directed by council or commission to make changes or brought forward and reviewed and acted on on a quarterly basis by the general plan, or I mean, by the Commission and ultimately City Council. So the mechanism to do so would probably be through the agenda forecasts that we've talked about, you know, if there's a specific issue or element, Commission would direct staff to work on that, providing direction as to what the concern would be. And staff would work that into that annual review or the, the quarterly review process for the general plan.
How do we get it on the agenda?
We do it, how we do anything on the agenda, you ask if it can be put on the agenda, Commission votes and says yes or no, and then it's put on the next agenda.
Would something of this importance, rather than it be fit in when it could, could we just say on a bi-annual basis that we will review elements one through four and...
That's, that's basically what I was saying.
Yeah, trying to have a, have a calendar around that so that it's not so onerous and it's not so contentious.
And I also think that we, we see what's wrong as we work with the plans, with what we see on a, on a bi-weekly basis. And, and so I think that some real good ideas could come out of what we see. One of, one of the other questions, I'm going to leave, but, well, no, I'm not. I would like to know where this new, what are you calling it? The, the new-
Medium low.
Yeah. I want to know where that came from. And I guess I, I think I have a problem with that in the fact that I think that one of the things that we've talked about is making new structures or remodels fit into the existing neighborhoods. And I don't think that does it by taking great big lumps and saying, "Okay, this is, this is going to be that new medium density." I have a little problem with that. And I don't know where that came from.
Why don't we wait until we actually are in that element to discuss that and let's get started with-
Could I ask one other question around this, this top, or how we're going to approach this? Is, I am putting a great deal of faith in what has happened the last six years. And topics like the medium, or whatever it's now called, the-
Low medium.
Low, middle, low, medium. That was discussed in council. I mean, that's, that was up again, there was public discussion around that. So unless it is a significant, in my view, material change that got slipped in and somehow somebody missed it and we need to discuss it, but wordsmithing and going back and breaking this thing apart, I don't find productive.
Yeah, I would really satellite style on this, not above the forest.
Yeah, I would find that really unproductive.
Well, I agree with you, Tracy. I just want to know where it came from. I mean, I want to know that it, it just didn't come out of somebody's head here and, and nobody else had seen it before. Because I don't remember seeing it.
I don't, I, I don't have that same impression. So I think this will be a lively, a lively discussion when we get to it, but we don't have to do that now.
Are you talking about the September council?
And with that, any other questions? Let's get into Chapter One, the introduction. I'm going to open up the public hearing semi-style and just say, would anyone like to discuss Chapter One, the introduction?
Oh. Never mind.
No one? Is there any commissioners who have any concerns with the introduction?
I think the introduction referred to reasons, and I'm sorry, I had it down at one point.
And I guess for everyone, it's the regional context, the background and setting, the overall vision of San Lina, the role of the general plan, the plan development process, the overview of what a general plan is and related planning documents and reference materials. So essentially what Victor went over in his introduction.
And when it was going over the reasons that it was continued from, you know, all those years, it didn't mention, after 2010, it didn't mention the census, which was a big reason for some of the, you know, to continue it in 2010. It mentioned the water, but not the, that the fact that the census had come out. And I thought that might be a crucial, you know, an important thing to mention.
That, that's fine. I mean, I obviously was not here at the time, so any, any clarity on, on the question of why it ended, why there was no action on it would be helpful.
Right. Because there, all of the tables and lots of the things that were in there were based on the 2000 census.
2000 census, right.
It really made a difference. So anyway, I just thought that might be a good thing to acknowledge since you're explaining why it was, you know, why it was, why it didn't get accepted into any town.
There was also a committee on the water and I, what was it, the, some, some yield committee.
Yeah. Safe water yields.
Tim Neiman and Alan and, John, what's John? I can't remember John's last name. You know, he's been around town forever.
John, not Sales, but-
Yeah, John Sales. It was John Sales. The three of them did a water yield thing and that, that's what really started it.
I think that's mentioned in there. That's, yeah, I think they did.
So would anyone in the public like to comment on the introduction? All right. Seena, let's move into land use and growth management. I'm sure there will be comments on this. Would the Commission like to invite public discussion, public comment first and then have?
I'd like to discuss it first and then get a public comment. I don't know. I mean, maybe some of what we're saying, they're going to talk about. I don't know. But I'll, whatever everybody wants.
I'd sort of like to hear them first, but-
Can we do that? I mean, can we flip it?
This is not a public hearing, study session, so it's a discussion.
Does it have to be, does it have to be, they have their chance and they're done?
No, I'm leaving it semi-open. I'm leaving it semi-open, but obviously we can discuss things.
I, I, as long as-
Yeah, if you have something that you'd like, let's, let's go.
As long as we are allowed.
If we do that, let's do that.
I, I would really like to discuss this new residential designation.
The medium low or the low, medium?
Yeah. And I, the first I heard of it, and maybe it went on long before, was when it was brought in with the report that went to the council last September. Which to me is, I mean, part of the objective here is that this plan has been vetted, there have been all of these workshops, people have had all this input, and this kind of came in at the last second. And I'm not sure what initiated it. And the night it came in, it came in along with the hotel use, which generated a lot of discussion. And I don't know the extent to which people really focused on this. So just in a general perspective, I would be not in favor of including it at this point, maybe considering it when we start to do the update process so that we can get some reaction from people. But I think that right now, as it is, I'm not sure it's really addressing the problem that people say exists. I mean, we have a growth management system in place. It's not as though somebody can come into town and assemble, you know, several lots and build lots of structures. And in the medium density district, you can build single-family homes. You can't just come in and build an apartment building without a use permit or something. And so I'm not sure what it's meant to get at. If, if it's meant to get at the FAR and things that we talk about constantly, there's a lot of implementing measures already in the plan that deal with that.
If, I could provide a little background. It actually, kind of the genesis of it came out, and I actually believe it kind of goes back a ways into some earlier discussions back in 2014 or 15, but more directly, it came out of the housing element update. And there was a requirement from the state that said, and this was in the 2009, 2014 housing element, and then it got rolled over, that said the city had to make multiple family a permitted use in the medium density zone. So that would have created a scenario where multiple family housing and affordable housing is completely exempt from any of the numerical growth restrictions, could go into essentially any of the existing neighborhoods in, in the city, which encompasses 90% of them without any process other than design review. So, so we were able to negotiate with the state and say that we have this disconnect between existing land use and the density of that land use and the maximum allowed by the land use designation. Would you be okay with us modifying that designation to better fit the land use? And they said, yes, they would. So, and so that's the genesis of it. The fact is, it could easily happen with the next housing element update that they would come back and say, we would want to see housing, multiple family housing a permitted use in the medium density zone, given the density range of 16 units an acre, if, if it's kept that way, and we'd be back where we started. So I, I think, I'm not sure what the downside is to doing it. Now, you could make an argument that maybe you don't need to do it anyway, but I, I really think there is a potential for things to happen that I would think would not be something the city would generally want to see, where you would have, somebody could knock down a number of, of homes, assemble land, and then under some future process would, could build up to 16 units per acre on that land. And there were density bonuses more than that, up to 20 or 22. So, so it, that's where it came from. It came out of the housing element process, a requirement that multiple family be a permitted use in the medium density zone, a need or desire on the part of a couple of council members to have the general plan land use designation better fit the density and get the city out of the, between a rock and a hard place situation with the state. And that, so that's what's bringing it forward.
And I would just add to that, which, thank you, Victor, that it's atypical for a city to designate its single-family residential neighborhoods to allow a medium density designation. I mean, up to 16 units per acre in a single-family residential neighborhood is atypical. And so some of this was efforts to preserve the development pattern that we have in those single-family neighborhoods.
But, I mean, has any consideration been given to the impact of this on housing? I mean, what has happened now is there are very few spots on this map where housing opportunities will exist. We've basically taken 60% of, you know, the medium, what was the medium density district and taken it off the table.
And furthermore, there, there is medium density on the east side that are single-family homes, quite a few. And what this does is take the onus off of the west side for the development with, you know, with by right development, no use permits, and putting it on what's left on the east side, which is very much against several things in the, in the housing element and in the general plan, especially equitable distribution of low-cost housing throughout the city. That was something that was very strongly advocated for. That cannot happen with this change. And my recollection of the request from, from City Council was to look at the zoning and down, reduce the zoning in the different categories. For example, 16 per acre is crazy for medium density. If you look at some of the other cities around here, I called American Canyon, Arinda, Healdsburg, Calistoga, and Sonoma. And their medium density is, American Canyon is five to 12 per acre. Ours is 16. Arinda is 10. Healdsburg is three to six, and then they have, yes, three to six in their medium. Calistoga is four to 10. Sonoma is 11. So our medium, our density levels, and this I recall being discussed at the City Council meetings, are high. And it was, my impression was that they were asking staff to see about lowering the densities in, in our categories.
But if we do, if we lower our densities across the board, we further move to what's concerning Mary. I mean, I think what, what I understand this to be is we're, and again, I, there, there are going to be viewpoints across the board as to what's appropriate in terms of the, the amount, that, how you divide it. But, but this change is getting exactly at your issue, which is saying our, our density is too high for medium density. There should be fewer homes on that size of lot.
There should be fewer-
Which is exactly what this is doing.
No, what this is doing is-
But it's doing it in some, it's doing it, and I agree, it's, it's shifting it to one portion, so that's a whole other topic of where that happens.
But even if the medium is lower, what we, the city can't, has decided, had decided, we only have 31 houses. Our arena numbers are such that we can have small developments dispersed throughout the town. We can have more and more fairly dispersed throughout the town, and they're small. So we don't need large density numbers. We can have a medium density all over the town, and some of the lots on the west side will have an eight-unit development or a six-unit development or a 12-unit, the same with the east side. And this puts the onus entirely on the east side to have massive numbers of, you know, I mean, 16, 16 units.
So I have to ask a quite, a clarifying question for you, Bobby, is that, so you're saying like Healdsburg's three to six, Arinda's 10, well, low, medium here is 4.1 to 7 dwelling units. It's basically, it's just, which route do you want to get to the same destination point?
16 and high is 28. That's higher than, that's higher than-
I know, but Bobby, what you were saying us, for us to do is just, we should just lower the, the numbers, the intensity of our zones. No, 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 no. Lower the density, lower the numbers in each density level is essentially the same as us moving the medium density to the low, medium density. And I hear, I hear Mary's point.
I would be saying that you would, we would take away the low, medium and every, and put it back to what it was if that's what we've decided, and then lower the amounts that are in there.
Yeah, we already have a minimum lot size in the medium density district. It's 7,000 square feet. You can only get six units per acre, you know.
That, that's part of the issue that we're trying to address is, is the-
There's inconsistency with what is existing with, with what, how it's zoned. And so they're trying to correct this inconsistency.
Thank you for bringing that up because-
I don't think we want to break the calendar, east and west side.
Yeah, I don't.
A reminder, I, I'd just like to remind everyone on the Commission that, that the zoning code is the other half of the general plan. So the general plan directs the zoning code to be, to implement the general plan policies. The, a comprehensive zoning code update is direly needed as a part of the land use regulations in this community. And as Commissioner Koberstein is pointing out, we have land use regulations which say we want a maximum of 16 units per acre, and at the same time, we want 7,000 square foot lot sizes. That is a complete inconsistency that requires staff to answer innumerable amount of questions on each development application that comes forward because the, the development regulations in place currently make no logical sense.
Well, I, I think creating another zoning district doesn't really simplify the process. You know, I, what I liked about this plan, and to me, this did just come up recently, which is why I think it should be put aside and given some serious consideration. It shouldn't just go right in. I, I think that the time needs to be spent doing the zoning regulations and the things, the other implementing actions that are in here that are going to make a difference and, and keep the neighborhoods the way people want them to be. And I don't view this as an east-side, west-side housing thing. I view it as, you know, scatter. You know, it's better planning than, to me, than to now look at this map and see the very few locations that we have in town for those kind of opportunities.
Well, that is east side.
Getting back to this basic issue, Bobby, if you had asked in calling those cities, what do they have zoned their existing single-family neighborhoods, they wouldn't have said medium density. They would have said low density. So you, you can call these things whatever you want to call them. The fact is, we're looking at coming up with a land use designation that fits 98% of the land use that's there currently and that would not allow, and potentially allow by right, two to three times that density to locate on any of those properties.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying though. On the east side of town, there are single-family, medium-density, lots of houses there.
But these aren't lots, Bobby. On, on this, on these zones, these are homes. These aren't empty lots that can be developed. There are existing homes.
I am talking about existing homes.
You probably have been reading in the papers from the other side of the hill because Healdsburg is changing their densities. Roderick, Roderick Park's just changed theirs, and they're having a big fight right now in Santa Rosa about the same thing. They want to increase their densities.
I am talking, I am talking about houses that are already there. I'm not talking about lots.
Well, you said lots.
Well, I, no, I, there's, if I did, I misspoke. I am talking about, there's, there are a lot of single-family houses on the east side, lots of them, in a medium zone place.
Well, if, if there's a distribution issue, if, if the map is not picking up some stuff on the east side that should be low, medium, then we need to modify the map. The solution isn't the opposite, then you ditch the low-density designation and keep everything medium so everybody else is equally inconsistent with existing land use. I, I mean, I, so if that is an issue, we would look at reconfiguring the lower-density designation to fit correctly the neighborhoods on both sides of town. So, and, and that's, that's a policy direction, that's something we can do.
But I would see- How did you draw, how did you draw the map? Did you survey the lot sizes and decide what should go into this new zoning district? How, how was this determined?
See, that one of the things I thought we were going to do, that we wanted to do, was do this by what the neighborhoods look like and, and what's there existing. And to, yes, ma'am.
Can't hear you at home.
And to, and to just lump a whole bunch of stuff together and say, this is what the density is, I don't think that's right either.
Well, and if you take the downtown-
What we did was, we looked, we looked at existing land use. If you look at a range of four to seven units an acre, which is what we're proposing, at, at seven units an acre, you're starting to talk about 4,000 to 5,000 square foot lots, when you take into account streets and other things. So the, the range, that range actually could fit the majority of, of what's out there now. And that's something, for example, we could go back and revisit. The areas that had somewhat smaller lots, we left with the medium, with the larger, we left with the low. But that doesn't mean we, we couldn't reconfigure it somewhat.
I just don't understand why the exercise, I don't understand why the exercise is necessary when there is so much to address with design and FAR.
It was to protect it from the state to come back.
If we have lots that are lots of record and are sitting there at a certain size, there's a limit already to what you can put on them. there's a limit already to what you can put on them.
It's to protect it from the state coming back and saying, you know how you have the key zones? Not anymore. It's everything that's medium residential are going to-
That's right.
No, let me finish, please. To come in and say, you don't need a use permit. All you have to do is make sure that you fit in the setbacks, but it doesn't make a difference. You could do a block.
Well, well-
If, if you have, for instance-
Let, let's look at the down, what was the downtown residential neighborhood? I mean, in my mind, if somebody's going to come in and they're maybe going to propose something that's denser, maybe it should be more walkable to town, maybe it should be there. Well, that, that whole neighborhood, you know, basically went into this new low, medium-
Which is primarily historic.
Well, yeah, but, right, but if you're, if you're going to build a multifamily housing or something, you generally would try to do it closer to the central business district. And so, to me, the map doesn't make any sense. I mean, if you talk about where you're going to put this kind of housing, you're, you're going to put it out on, you know, Olive Street or whatever, where you're walking on a mile into town?
I understand the point you're, you're making. I think it's, staff wasn't looking at trying to start from scratch, so to speak, as far as, as far as land use planning and, and, you know, it's just like you said, let's, let's densify along transit corridors or primary circulation routes for vehicles. We were trying to respect the existing development pattern of the community, and that comes from a lot of the direction that we've heard from the citizens regarding preserving the character and quality of life that this community has. And from the staff's perspective, it doesn't make sense to have two-thirds approximately of your single-family neighborhoods designated as medium-density residential.
I don't, I don't think it's hurting anything right now, is my point.
I understand. So, so what I'm hearing, to summarize, is concern over the timing of implementation of the low-medium-density district, as well as the distribution of where those sites were chosen.
And- I think it should be studied more, and we are constantly hearing about how much is on your plate and what you have to do. And so, I think to multiply things by now creating a, a third district that may not be needed, just doesn't make a lot of sense. I, I think it should be put, put off and studied more to look at the ramifications. I mean, I don't know how many non-conforming things will be created as a result of changing this, you know?
I-
If, if I could add from a staff standpoint, if I had to pick one thing that is more needed in this general plan, it's fixing that disconnect between the existing, with the medium-density applying to the entire residential, single-family neighborhoods in the city, and the density allowed by that. That, in, in more than any other thing in this plan, needs to be fixed, and I-
I don't disagree with you in theory, but I think it should be studied more.
I mean, you're talking about something that was brought up four months ago, five months ago, and I'm, I'm much more comfortable with taking a plan that I know has been vetted by people over decades now and saying, great, you know, let's, let's do this and then let's update it. And to me, this is a major land use change that's just coming in at the last minute.
So maybe we can hear from the other commissioners.
Well, I agree with Mary. I'll turn off my-
It, it, one, one additional bit of background. Part of the reason it didn't come up was it could not come up, given the, the existing housing elements at the time, because it was felt the state could not or would not approve of it. So it was something that was negotiated with, with the, the most recent housing element update. Folks were aware of it before. It was just something that didn't offer a potential solution until the city came up with this new housing element cycle, combined with the fact that the number of units in that rena cycle is, was just mentioned, was substantially lower. So in, in terms of simply explaining the history of it, that's some of the background, at least my understanding of it.
I would also suggest, I know I'm not a different commissioner, but is that all right if I say something?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I, I want there to be something said about, what I'm hearing Victor say is that it seemed wrong to have all these single, these single-family places that were zoned medium be, have to, have to be impacted by the state law that said that therefore people could without a per, use permit, by right, build multifamily. I want to suggest that that is a concern for every property owner in this town, whether they're in high-density zone, or medium-density zone, or the proposed low-medium-density zone. I don't understand why only one part of town is being protected from this onus. And I think that's the onus that we've had all along about housing and affordable housing, and that's why we decided to disperse small developments evenly throughout the town, which this, this change will prevent from happening. And that's my concern, and I would like, unless nobody else on the commission agrees with me.
I mean, I, I'm sorry, Bobby. I think that you're wrong. When I look at the map, there's a lot of light brown and yellow and dark brown on both sides of Main Street.
And I agree with you.
I'm really sorry. I think that it's, it's, it's a pretty proportional blend to the number of houses that are on both of those sides, because there are more homes on the west side of Main Street.
My point is, though, why should people who are zoned in higher, single-family-
There's not, Bobby, can you please get the map in front of you?
Well, I want to tell you, I see the zoning.
Okay.
But I live in a high-density zone place.
So do I.
And I live in a single house.
So do I.
And so to say, no, you don't.
Oh, I live in a condo, sorry.
And there are other single, the entire, there are other single-family dwellings there.
And I live in a higher density than either one of you.
I'm, all I'm saying-
It's not a pissy match over here.
But I love it there.
All I'm saying is that people who have parcels in medium-density and high-density are now having to bear the full brunt of the state's mandate. And I don't think it's appropriate to protect just one part of the city, especially when we have in our general plan that we are going to disperse small, small developments throughout the town equally. And as Mary was saying, we can, we can vet each one as they come up.
There are housing opportunity sites on both sides of Main Street.
Right.
I'm talking about the zoning, not key opportunities.
There's zoning on both sides of Main Street.
I, I hear what you're saying. I, I think we've, I, I think staff has a good summary, as I mentioned. There's concern over the implementation and timing of, of the low-medium-density residential designation, and the distribution of where those sites are.
I think that Mary would be, and I actually would be more comfortable if we maybe knew what the size of the lots were.
Well, I just, I would like to point out with regards to non-conforming-
And we'd like to do it by neighborhood. I would like to do it by neighborhood.
Having a single-family residential parcel designated medium-density is a non-conforming situation existing.
So this isn't doing anything.
Potentially, potentially.
The town is basically developed and built, and what's sitting there is sitting there. And whether you comply with the 7,000 or not, the whole issue about housing is somebody's going to have to come in and buy up a lot, knock it all down.
I understand the point. It's just, what staff would like to do is to get the general plan and the zoning consistent with each other. And if we leave a majority of the city designated medium-density, and then staff comes in and proposes 4,000 square-foot lot sizes to accommodate medium-density development, then that becomes a problem for all of those parcels that are designated that but currently built out at a lower-density designation.
Right, but you have a plan that basically says all of these housing things, including people who come in and build tourist businesses.
There, your microphone.
They're going to provide worker housing or whatever. It's in the medium-density and it's in the high-density. So you have taken, you know, 60% of the medium-density off the table, and there could be very appropriate areas where you'd put in some workforce housing, or, or you'd do something else. And so, it just, it seems to me like it needs a lot more thought, and it shouldn't go in right now.
I understand that, I understand that point.
And I agree with you.
But Mary, if it were, if it were zoned medium, it could be done, that could be done by right. I guess that's the, that's, that's the rub.
Potentially down the road. Currently, no, because we were able to negotiate the, the requirement. But I, I think if we're going to have a productive study session, I think moving on from this topic would benefit everyone.
I think this is way productive. I'm ready, I'm willing to quit, but I, I appreciate that, that I had time and that other people had time. So I don't think there should be time limits.
I do think, though, that staff knows how we feel, and that's the point. We don't need to keep spinning our wheels. All right. Anything else?
You have to open up public and land use.
Yeah, I mean, would anyone like to speak on this? Jeff?
This is land use?
Yes.
First thing is, there's some concern with the proposed change in the Adams Street zoning that, that came, was voted by the council on November 24th to change the Adams Street zoning. And there's some concern, there's some feeling by citizens that by having the zoning split in the way that it's been over the years gives the citizens protection in terms of projects coming in, so that the residents and citizens have a, have a, still have a say in, in sort of what happens. By changing it to fully commercial, then a project can come in and, and really, there's, there's nothing the citizens can, can say. So I think that that should be looked at. That was sort of there for a, a reason, is that it, it gave, you know, a tool for the citizens. The winery element, is that in land use? The, the small winery and winery stuff, is that a land use zoning? So, okay, so-
It won't be in this discussion at all.
Okay.
It won't be in the general plan.
Well, we want a winery element in the general plan so that it connects to the zoning. We sent a letter into that effect. And the reason is that, I'm traveling all around California, and I'm hearing from other counties dealing with these winery issues. We're seeing a, it's kind of a development strategy that commercializes ag land, and it does so by putting a winery on agricultural land and then using that winery for commercial purposes, hospitality purposes. And it, in a sense, commercializes that agricultural land. And as we saw when the, the proposed changes to the small winery ordinance came through town here, it would, in a sense, commercialize, it could commercialize all our residential areas. So we like the protection that's in there now with the small winery ordinance and the, and the winery definition, but we feel that it needs to be in the general plan so that there's no loophole that can be slipped through. And this is a serious and growing problem all over the state. I just got a call from somebody in Virginia, in wine country, whose, their homes there are being impacted by this commercial use in their ag areas. So that was one of the things that we, we saw when the small winery ordinance tried to, they tried to change it, was that all of a sudden, our residential roads would be used as egress and ingress for these commercial uses. And that's not consistent with, with our investment in our residential properties. So I think the winery element needs to be in the general plan, and we have a letter that was submitted on, on that. So I just wanted to make sure that that was acknowledged. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak on land use? Je, Jesse, would you like to speak on land use? All right. Any other commissioner comments?
Um, for all of land, is the tourist thing in the land?
No, that's element three.
That's sustainable.
We're not there yet.
So the, the tourist, about, about the tourism stuff.
That's the sustainable, that's element-
I mean, I was just- Okay. Yeah, I just- Well, here, oh, yeah, what is, right, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I have a disorganized mind, and it hurts for me to.
Do you have anything on land use?
Well, that's what I'm looking for.
While you're looking, does anyone else have any concerns with the implementing actions, the goals or the policies?
Oh, yeah, let's see. Oh, yeah, I, I was wondering on, 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 what, on Victor's printout on page two dash four-four, it says added policy LU5H, which directs the city to adopt guidelines concerning agricultural buffer area to reflect a mitigation measure contained in the EIR. It seemed to me that was, that, well, I would, that we probably need more time to study that, because is that added? When was that added? Is that just like?
It, it's currently a mitigation measure in the EIR that I believe dates back to 2010 or 11.
Oh, okay, so, I mean, but it's not in our, in the, it's not in the general plan.
Right, and so simply bringing the language forward was a way of ensuring the two documents were consistent.
Okay, okay, I, I just didn't understand. Thank you.
And just all, on that point, it's, general plans are, are completely separate animals from projects, because they're not, there's not project-specific impacts related to general plan. So you want a general plan and a general plan EIR to kind of be a symbiotic relationship where they're self-mitigating. So, so this directs staff to then, as they implement the zoning code, to implement measures to address basically agricultural buffer areas.
Okay.
So it's a way to make sure that the direction of the general plan and the general plan EIR are actually accommodated and accomplished.
I see, yes, okay, you're right. I just didn't understand what, I couldn't understand what it meant.
All right.
I think that's all I have. Yeah, I don't have any more.
Okay, let's delve into element three, economic sustainability. Any commission comments, excuse me, to start? Again, we can, we can, we can flip-flop on this.
Is that I agree with Victor's comments on this letter. I agree with that, and I had, uh-
Which comment was his?
The one that Victor made on this letter, I'm agreeing with.
Basically, that the, the implication in the letter was that there was no thought given to how our town approaches, manages and, and efforts to have sus, be sustainable and the impacts of tourism, where there's a lot of detail, and there's been a lot of thought around that.
And I got this one this afternoon, and it says, there's one particular area, the tourist, tourist management element for the 93 plan, and how it has been folded in 2035 plan. I think there's a better approach than that more accurately reflects the public polling done by the committee, and is also a very good comparison between the 93 and 35 plans. So this person liked, liked what's in this, this better than he did the old tourism.
This is, in my view, a very holistic approach, and it, it, it deals with the bigger picture and not isolating out tourism as either good or bad, but how it fits into our overall economic sustainability as a community, and recognizes the fact that tourism isn't, is a key element there, and it doesn't shy away from it, but it also looks at how do we approach it in a way that has long-term sustainability for the community. So I think-
Well, I had concerns with this.
I would recommend maybe changing the photographs since trivia no longer exists.
Well, Victor also said-
Well, be around in 2035.
Victor also said about this letter that he liked the language. So, I mean, that he appreciated that-
No, no, that, that, simply, the approach simply, as opposed to someone getting up and saying, I don't like what's being proposed, is proposing changes to address whatever the concerns are. I definitely wasn't either endorsing it, or, you know, I, I was simply making a comment that, from a staff standpoint, it's a constructive way to engage.
Yeah, well, I, I agree with-
But not to, not to divert our, our discussion and suddenly want to insert their letter.
Right, right.
Right. I didn't interpret that to be your conversation.
Well, I had some problem with this on, on page eight. Is that where we are? Yes. That, it was the, the staff report, this page eight of the staff report. It talks about, um-
Where are you, Bobby? She's page eight on, on the staff report.
Oh. Eight of 12, item six.
Okay. No, that's, that's the right spot. You got it. The right spot.
Um, the, it says that the plant, that the 2016 general plan deletes policies from the 1993 plan that advocates rigid numerical limits, which I thought was interesting. I, I would have just said established numerical limits. And I don't know that I agree with that. I mean, I agree that there's no right or wrong about this, but I think there is a prudent choice, a more prudent choice. I think that guidelines are clear and prescribed by a public process that doesn't demand general participation at every planning commission hearing. I think those work better than vague directors, directives that may appear to be arbitrary and capricious decisions from a public process that usually only involves the participation of the people involved.
Are you reading from the, I'm reading the letter.
These are my comments, okay?
Oh, okay, I thought you were, you were reading something from-
No, no, I wish I were reading from there. Okay, so maybe I can, I, I don't know if you're following me, but I think that it's a good idea to have, I don't, I'm not saying we should keep the, the, the numbers that were in the 1993 general plan, but I think it's a good idea, just like we have FAR numbers, have FAR numbers, we have maximum numbers. They help guide the people who are making decisions in an objective way, namely us and the city council, they help guide us when making decisions. And I think that if we take out any kind of specified number and leave it vague, that it is going to, that is, that involves a public process that is decided with each item that comes up, which means usually just the people interested in that item, my sense is that if there's a maximum, a cap, that's decided in, in a general way, in an objective general way, where people can, like this, like this general plan hearing, where the whole public can come once to weigh in on that issue and they don't have to come every single time to weigh in on the issue of the numbers, that it's, it's, it avoids the appearance of arbitrary and capricious decisions at times when the public won't like it and they'll come and they say, you know, we think this is too much. I think that we can have defined caps and still be flexible, the same way we are with FAR numbers. And if and when these specified numbers are found to be ineffective, they can be changed up to four times a year, so, because we can change the general plan.
So, I, the cost, yeah, I would argue that the cost and the time going into, the, what we want this plan, I, I can speak then for myself, as I'm sure, what I want this plan to be is a guiding force, but when it starts having formulas and we start saying, we're going to have seven restaurants this week, and then someone wants to come in and make an eighth restaurant and we have to.
Well, I think that we need to have a general plan.
This is my point, though.
I'm, I'm going to admit that I happen to be on the subcommittee that decided to take those out.
I agree with that.
For the reason that you were just saying, that in the, in the, in the fourteen years I've followed the city councils, and there's been several of them, they have never turned down a cap on a, on, on a restaurant or on a hotel.
Well, then, I'm saying, what I'm saying is they should have changed the caps if they didn't think they were high enough. There are plenty of specified numbers for things in this general plan.
I think council, I think council's provided significant amount of direction, as has previous commissions in reviewing this, to eliminate the hotel room cap and the restaurant seat cap.
Well, my suggestion would not be to put those caps back. My suggestion would be to work on establishing new caps that are more appropriate for our needs right now. And if they turned out to be ineffectual in the future, they could be, they could be changed too. But to have no cap at all, no numbers at all for guidelines, just like FAR, I think is dangerous.
But it gets back to, we, we have the, the general nature of sustainability being the guideline. We have our water limits, we have population, we have land, we have limits to our, our urban.
Have design review.
Yeah, design review, so all of those elements work, but if we, we have something that's, what now, six, what, how many years in the making is this?
That's irrelevant. That is irrelevant.
Two oh six really, two oh six, Gracey.
Yeah, but the more we tighten it up, the more we're going to have these kinds of conversations and have to concentrate on.
We're having, we're having a discussion tonight and that's all. I mean, obviously, you don't agree with me, so that's fine. I'm just throwing that up as, as, as something that I was thinking of and something I felt was important. But I don't think that the, I don't think we can throw in this, we've been working on it for ten years when it's something you don't like, but then if you do like it, we can make a change.
And I, I would go back and say that, you know, I, to Mary's point earlier, something came along in the last couple of months. I actually have no issue with the land use designation changes, but I think there's good commentary around the fact that was, that is a very recent discussion. But things like caps and I would say ninety percent of this document has been so well-vetted over the last decade or six years at a minimum, but I will go back the decade, because I think many, back to two thousand and six, that with the exception, I think with perhaps, in my view, the only exception of that recent change.
Well, these are changes, these are recent changes.
No, the, the cap is not a recent change. The cap is a discussion.
Well, it is, it's on, it's on the list that Victor put out.
It's a change from the nineteen ninety-three.
I know it, but it hadn't been discussed before now.
It's not a recent change. I was eleven in nineteen ninety-three.
I thought, it was, it was discussed in all the general.
I think it was in the two thousand and ten.
Over and over and over.
Can I just ask if there's, can I just ask if there's other support from the commission to, to recommend the council change those?
No, I don't support that.
I just want to ask Victor, though, was, I thought that your list was the things that had been changed since the last, since October of twenty fifteen.
Well, I mean, there are two lists. One is the one in the staff report, which is comparing ninety-three and the two thousand and sixteen. And the one I just emailed out is a comparison between the, the September two thousand and fifteen and the April two thousand and sixteen. And, yeah, that's, that didn't come out of, it was there way before it's been indicated.
And Victor, just as I'm understanding, most of, the, the little email that you sent out, that's public record, many of these things were simply wordsmithing and smaller issues or they were, well, that we had already discussed them or councils discussed them. There's nothing other, and again, other than what happened in September, there's not a lot of material change.
Exactly. They reflect direct council action, action or simply updating information, partly was simply a new census data, as Bobby mentioned, and then using more current data, and then there's corrections. You'd be surprised on a, you know, two hundred-plus-page document, you know, going through.
Okay, I just want to, to, because I, I'm fairly angular and emotional at times, but I just wanted to say that based on so much city, you know, public alarm about tourism, that's, that's what I'm, you know, that's what I'm addressing, because there is so much alarm that I thought that if we could have a new discussion about caps involving the public as well as the business community, as well as everyone else, that that might be a way to mitigate some of these sense that we're just, you know, the tourism thing is taking off forever. If we could do reasonable limits, that's why I brought it up.
I think that gets back to the quarterly reviews or biannual reviews or whatever becomes practice, but I think material, if we take this off the rails, I don't feel that's appropriate. I feel these conversations have been had, other, again.
But you wouldn't necessarily be against it in four months or something like that if it were up on a.
I would have to see how it's worded and what the motion is. I'm not going to say what I'm against or for.
But I mean, you wouldn't be against changing.
See, one of the problems is, Bobby, I, one of the problems that we had on the subcommittee was how do you set the cap and who's, who's here knowing what we're going to do in the future?
And having to go to city council every time that there's a new, a new cap change.
Today, I can say, well, I'm going to have ten of these, and my next Friday, I'm going to have twenty-five of them and don't even realize it.
Well, that would be what the discussion would be about, but anyway.
But.
Can I say two words?
Okay. I don't know that caps are the problem. I think that the real issue here is how do you keep and support the local businesses? And that's not necessarily a restaurant or hotel cap issue. It's a more fundamental thing about keeping the town, you know, the way we would like it to be. I think many of the comments in this letter are very constructive. I don't think it's our place to put new words in now, but I think, I would hope that the council would take a good look at it. I don't find it that controversial.
Nor do I.
I think it's helpful. But on the issue of caps, I don't know that it's worth fighting about.
I hear you.
I think the thing that strikes me is when you read about how the rents are going up and people can't afford, you know, to stay where they are and they have to move around town, I think it's more important to focus on how you keep the kind of business here that you want to stay in town.
I really like what you just said and I, and I'm wondering, would we be agreeable to maybe somehow ask the council to look at this letter and look at those, some of the things that were said or, or, you know, something like that? Is that, would that be a way to cover this?
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah, if it's the consensus of everybody, I mean, I think there are worthwhile comments.
Going to that, okay.
I would not be in support of sending direction to the council to rewrite the sustainability economics. I, I would not vote for that.
No, just that we should, oh, okay. So, you wouldn't be for that?
No, I would not.
Would, would you?
Probably not. No, I just, I think that I would like them to look at that and if they feel that there's something that really calls out to them.
The letter went to the council.
I know, but we could say that we.
Well, does it just want us? But it did go to them.
Bring attention to, I mean, we, if, if we wanted to, we could say that we wanted them to.
You know, I'm going to take, I'm going to take a guess that they're listening.
It's a very reasonable request, but I don't think it warrants, at this point, taking this off the train and saying, or the tracks and saying, let's start over. I think it, there's, there will continue over the next twenty-five years, be valuable, constructive inputs, and we need a better way to make them come into action. I think that's been a biggest problem here, is we, we're just rewriting the plan, but we never edit the plan. We never go back and update the plan. So, now we have a plan that's, you know, decades in the making when, if people as a community felt that there was a process and you could, you know.
Well, we've been updating it, it just hasn't.
Well, no, but that, but that's the whole point, is if we would say, okay, there are the reasonable way for citizens to get changes made, this wouldn't create the angst that it creates, but we've, as a community, done that to ourselves and in two-ten, kicking it down the can one more time. All of these things lead to where we are today, but I don't think it's, at least as I sit on this desk, I'll have a, it'll have to be a real material change to make me want to say, let's not keep it moving. And again, September, I'm not standing.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know that it's going to derail things. It's up to the council. I mean, we're on a, a schedule and, you know, there are comments of things to look at and change or not change, and it's ultimately their decision. I do think that tourism versus local is, is a major issue and I think that this is worth, you know, their consideration.
Yeah, I agree.
And with that, because there is just only twenty minutes left, I'd like to invite the public to come up and speak, I know.
On a first three.
On which one, the next one?
No, no, on this one.
First three, yeah. Yeah, on sustainability.
No, on sustainability.
No, that didn't mean you could talk.
He wants his notes.
Sustainability, right?
Yes.
So, on this same conversation, I, Doug Barr, twenty-four eighty Spring Mountain Road, I didn't expect to be talking about this tonight. So, I'll go through this quickly. What's most important, thank you, Victor, for your putting this all together, because it's much more understandable after all of this amount of time, that we've all looked at the ninety-three and the two thousand and five and thirty-five and how complicated it all is. The objective of this, and again, thank you, Victor, for mentioning that the lawyer letter that came from this is not meant to be what this is about. It really was, our group saw that the ninety-three general plan, which is still in effect, obviously, dealt with tourism in a way that they thought it was the most important thing to the community, the biggest problem to face the community, so much so that they put together their own specific non-state mandated element for that. And then in two thousand and five now, it's been rolled in and included in the other one. And as it says in Victor's assessment, there's a different philosophy in that. And it's evolved over all these years. In the two thousand and ten, March two thousand and ten, general plan, forgive me, I have a cold here, but that March two thousand and ten, a general plan had polling that was done in two thousand and seven, not nineteen ninety-three. That was the last major polling that was done on this. And you were on that committee, Grace, and that committee, the March two thousand and ten, the earliest one turned in by the committee, left in both local serving and non-local serving language. They hadn't decided yet where it was going to go. And then in that period between March two thousand and ten, six years later, roll ahead, we don't know who did what, when, how, why, unless you scroll back through all the tapes of all the different city council meetings, so nobody really knows. So, in the name of transparency, and so that we understood it, our group sat down with both the two thousand and thirty-five, the updated general plan, and the ninety-three. And our attempt was to try to find a compromise between the two. Ninety-three was during a period when they said, no more tourism, not one more hotel, not one more tourist if we can avoid it, no more restaurants. We want only local serving, it's prohibited to have non-local serving. Too far. For the time, maybe it was right. And it, interestingly, even though it says in the, the new general plan that it didn't serve the community, interestingly, it did seem to, to serve the community. The businesses on Main Street have remained generally not local serving in the sense of seventy percent of, of local products, it's products that appeal to locals and thirty percent that'll appeal to tourists or vice versa, any specific numbers. But what has remained are businesses that are primarily locally owned. When you look at the list, if you just walk up and down Main Street, it was quite surprising to me because I did this, and there are about thirty businesses and they're all locally owned. And the jewelry store, for instance, doesn't sell primarily to locals, but if you go in there with your little kid, they'll know your little kid's name, Wayne and Marcus, and they'll give him a discount if he's buying something for his mom. It's that kind of local serving. So, we thought, well, why don't we compromise and find local serving that redefines local serving and it deals with being locally owned and being participants in the community? I mean, that's a hard thing to do, but it's still better than encouraging. I don't think I can get this done.
Oh, you keep going, it's fine.
I ignore this.
Yeah, ignore it.
So, that was the attempt there. The attempt with caps is to give tools. It's just to give tools. If you leave it up to the market to determine how many hotels are going to be here, we're going to have nothing but hotels, we're going to turn into Yottville. Yottville, I just noticed in the paper the other day, doesn't have Little League after this year because there's no there there. And that could happen here too. So, the idea isn't that we should have zero. The idea is that, look, we've got seventy up at Las Ocasas, Ted Hall wants to put in sixty down here, I think. Roddy Friedrichs is already online to, he has a permit to do another seventy, so now you've got a number. So, okay, it's whatever that adds up, do two hundred and fifty, that's a place to start. That could be the cap and it's revisited whenever the city council wants to. That lets you say to the Radisson group that comes in, yeah, not so much, not so much for us. But you can also say, yeah, we want a Radisson, we think that's a good idea. It's a tool. That was the idea with that one. The, the other issue was chain retail. We thought that chain retail is an important issue here and it's an important issue. We just did a thing at the White Barn, our group sponsored, Walter Kizer, who's a renowned, you know him, Victor, he's a renowned city planner consulting group, and they've worked with groups like Aspen and, and Bozeman and Jackson Hole and all kinds of these areas that could be, are in transition to one percenter areas that we are. And the biggest problem that he identified at that meeting, for those of you who were there, was how do you not hollow out, our, our back streets are being hollowed out because we don't, people don't live here. So many properties are owned by people who are, are weakened. How do you keep your main street from being hollowed out as well? And his point of view was that the biggest problem are these boutique chains, he called them. It's those, it's Prada, Coach, Hermes, Ralph Lauren, and they're the same. And if I had my material with me, I didn't think I was going to talk tonight, they're the same in Stade, they're the same in Saint-Tropez, they're the same in East Hampton, they're the same in Mykonos, they're the same, all over the world, they've become generic. And he gave me an RFP that was just sent to him by Aspen, and the RFP says, we've got these local, these one percent boutiques, they only sell to the richest one percent. And they're on, they're here in Aspen, not because they care about selling or making money here, the stores are empty all the time. Who's going to go skiing and buy a thousand-dollar handbag? Maybe somebody, but that's not why they're there. They're not locally owned, they're not locally managed, they have nothing to do with the community, they make very little sales tax. And, and he said, and therefore, our main street has become hollowed out, because what they're interested in is using it as part of their brand. You want to be in Beverly Hills, you want to be in Aspen, you want to be in St. Helena, you want to, those are names on a letterhead, but they're not good for the towns. And the RFP is from Aspen saying, how do we get out of this? How do we get rid of these stores? So, that was the idea of the chain retail. It gives a tool to you to say to people who might be coming in here from Hermes, yeah, not so much. We just don't think that's really right for this little farming community. It's not even right for Aspen, which is a hundred percent a tourist community. It's only about tourism. So, those were the things. And then the final thing that we touch on in here is a cost-benefit analysis. We've talked about this over and over, that that's a tool that we all need to know. How much does it cost us for every tourist that comes to town? Then we can compare that to the TOT and say, are we making any money here on these guys? Or should we be more careful about what kind of tourism we want? So, that's the point of this, it's a compromise. I know the lawyer part of it makes it not seem that, but the reason we sent it to a lawyer was a couple of things. We thought it would get, be more specific language that you could then plug in, because we don't want to derail this, that's not the point of this. This is having language vetted by five different lawyers, two from one firm and three other lawyers have looked at this, very specific language, it tells you exactly where it ought to be plugged in. For the most part, it won't change, make drastic changes, it doesn't change anything even in your formatting, but it will solve these problems. It's not so specific that it's prohibitive, so you're not going to have some restriction of commerce, constitutional issues that I think the mayor was concerned about, that's all been vetted and all of these lawyers said not possible. And yet, you'll have some new tools, it shouldn't be difficult to plug this in, and that's why we sent it to a lawyer. We didn't expect it to come back with all the prefaces and all the attributions that made it so snarky. That's not the idea at all. The idea wasn't that this is something that we're doing to the city, this is something that we're trying to help the city come up with a real decent compromise that'll help us all.
Wow.
Top of my head, sorry.
You have my vote.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on economic sustainability? All right.
Before, because it is ten till, do we want to go to the fourth element, of public facilities and services?
Do we want to respond to it all, to what was just said?
Can I just finish?[1685.01]
Can I just finish?
Yeah.
I, I was getting to that.
Oh, okay.
All right. Continue discussing or ask Mr. David to come up on whatever his topic is.
I'd like to make a comment, but it doesn't relate to a specific section.
I, what, what would we like to, would you like to, do you want to close out this?
Did we talk about anything that Doug just focused on?
I think we should talk, but I think we should let, is it with the next section?
No.
No, it's on.
Okay, well, maybe if he's here, we could let him say what we want.
What do you want to close out on, I mean?
Yeah, why don't we, no, yeah, let's close up.
I kind of want to kind of get back and discuss them.
Yeah.
We just heard before we move on.
I was talking about closing out the element and then asking Mr. David to come up.
I think he's been sitting here all night.
So do we have any direction on the element to give anything else before? Because we're not coming back.
What do you guys think?
I mean, do you have any?
Well, if someone does come at the next meeting and wants to discuss it, it obviously will open that, that element back up because I'm not going to tell some, sorry, you weren't here the first night.
No, but do we need to?
Do we need to?
Well, do you want to, does anyone want to say anything about what was just said? Or respond?
I mean, Noah, your advice on the letter and just asking city council to make sure they read it? I mean, is that really necessary?
It's a part of the public record. If there are elements of the letter or the policy language that the commission is supportive of, or even concepts in it, then the, the commission can indicate that support, and we can bring that recommendation or, or that, that support on with the recommendation once we get there.
I'd like to wait.
Do you want us to do that now or to write? Because we just got this, you know, so we can write you.
We're going to be, we'll be definitely coming back to you. Maybe take some time to, to think about the language. Staff hasn't had a lot of time to think about the language.
And we're only five days since we've had this.
Exactly.
So I'd like to wait before.
I would like to make just for the record in conversation tonight, is that, you know, I think there is, there are a lot of, it's, it's thoughtfully produced, but I think really to the same point that Mary made earlier, is that what's the point? Isn't that we always, we can review any of the businesses that come in. These are all conditional use businesses on Main Street. So the, be a Prada or a locally owned, having that as a prescription, I think it's, it takes, it, it's, it's undermining the fact that I think as a commission and then ultimately as a council, we will make those decisions based on the individual applicant. Not that it's, you know, there are certain, and I don't know, I'm not saying that Prada is one of them, but there are, there are potentially chain ownership businesses that would make sense. And so I think to have it as a black or white, you, I, I would want that, that ability to make that decision in the case of the applicant, not necessarily say, you can't come town. I mean, I think a perfect example of that was when Paul Fleming tried to put in a property or a restaurant south of town and was not, wasn't able to be considered because he's part of Fleming's. He wanted to put it independent, he wanted to work at, he, he lives, I mean, at that time, lived locally. So I think, I, I think we can make hasty decisions based on a formula, and it, I think would be something that should be considered applicant by applicant. So I'm not in favor of it.
But I'm going to coattail off of yours, that I think that ES one dot B with updating the municipal code to define and permit non-chain, I think that, that we attack that through the updating the municipal code rather than with the general plan. Keep this fluid, general plan a little bit more.
Well, even if those tools were there, we could still vet everything individually.
Yeah, exactly.
So, but, but the tools can be useful at times. Like, you know, it's, you can, you can implement them when you want to, and you can be flexible when that seems more appropriate. I don't see.
But then that's back to arbitrary, and I think that we're trying to not.
I mean, why do we have anything, why do we have anything in there?
Because these are guidelines versus.
This is basically saying, update the municipal, municipal code to be your, the, the guideline.
Well, I haven't.
I just don't think it belongs here. I, I don't just agree with a lot of what Mr. Barr said, but I just don't believe it should be that prescriptive here. I mean, it should be more directional and strategic.
Well, I don't agree with that.
It's kind of like the constitution doesn't, gives overarching.
I understand what you're saying.
And the nitty gritty is.
But these are giving, this is giving a philosophy. I mean, the, the general plan.
I want to work with this side.
Yeah, yeah. I think that.
Were you going to say something?
Mary, Victor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, no, no, I, I, I think it makes sense. I, I think the, the sentiment that we all just got this wording, so I, I think it's something, we have plenty of time here. This is kind of the first go-through. I think, you know, when we're looking at May or June, when the commission's looking at taking action on this, kind of a summary of that, then that would be a time to revisit it.
Yeah, I agree.
We're getting right at the center of the conversation.
I think with five days in hand is enough time to come up with, if September isn't good enough for Mary, then five days definitely isn't good enough. So I think with.
I was just thinking in terms of our recommendations.
So with that, huh, excuse me?
He's got seven minutes.
I mean, okay, so you have six minutes, Mr. David.
I don't want six minutes. First of all, I want to tell you that I've enjoyed listening to, to the back and forth here of the C. I came here really expecting to hear a presentation by Vincent, and really not a whole lot of discussion about material or, or meat. So I'm not really prepared to deal in that area at all. But I'd like you to, to think of a few things. You have staff, you have experts, you have professionals that give you input, that give you advice, that are available to you. We, the public, have none of those resources. We're looking at three hundred plus pages of information. We're looking at an EIR, and it's, it's a good thing that we have this time. It's a good thing that there is sixty days or whatever it is. And it's an opportunity for you to show our city, which is divided in many ways. You know, I've never been at a place with so few people and so many factions. It's unbelievable. But you need to encourage them to come forth. You need to make them a part of this process. You need to be as transparent as you can possibly be. And at the, in the end, we'll never have a perfect document. But if everybody feels like they've really had an opportunity to speak their piece, then so be it. They need to be quiet, including me. So I encourage you to do that. One thing is to thinking of, of, you're thinking in the sense of the town and the change and the flexibility that you can make. But I've been involved in real estate and development my entire life. And you read a town by looking at things like its general plan and seeing what it says and what it, what sense you get of what you could accomplish in that town. So as you, remember, this is a blueprint. It's for both sides. And if someone thinks they can advantage you because what they read leaves the door open, then they'll keep prying. So as you think of that, temper it, okay? You need to have a strong front. The most important thing of this document is to protect our city and to keep it what it is and what we admire. And we all know it's really changing. It is hollowing out. We have too many second homes. We, we have a lot of issues that we've never had to face before. So do your best. And let's make sure that we have the necessary precaution in this document to discourage more of the same.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
How do you get more people to participate?
I think by.
I mean, you can see what we've got here in late, Mr. David.
I understand that. I, I will tell you that I know a number of people who would have come, but they thought the same as I did, and that was that you got, you were just going to have a presentation of the plan and, and the timing and what was going to evolve, et cetera, as opposed to actually really getting into it. So I, I suspect that's one of the reasons that there's less participation.
Well, thankfully, there'll be a few more of these meetings.
This isn't very public at this point. I mean, there's been nothing in the paper about, you know, the imminence of this. I suspect that so few people even knew what was going to be discussed tonight, that, you know, it hasn't gotten on the radar yet. So.
Well, that is why we're going to have a few more meetings before we do anything.
Yeah, absolutely. Let's get it out there. And let's, as I said, encourage people to do this. It's really to your benefit. Encourage them to, to write to you if they don't want to come. Whatever you can do, get that participation.
Is the format?
I'm getting thirsty, so I'm not speaking too well.
Is the format, is the format in this meeting, do you think there, that anything could change to be more inviting, or do you think it's just?
Well, no, I like the idea that they are billed as study sections. They're really public hearings, effectively, but you don't have the three minute notice. You're, like I'm standing here now, I would never get to do this if we were having a more formal meeting. So no, I, I think it's terrific. And hopefully, we'll have more of that as time comes. You might want to consider, you know, having a separate session prior to a regular meeting, but that's up to you. Okay?
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thanks, dear.
I think I had a public hearing. I don't think I needed to, but just if I did, I am closing it, so. Okay.
Wow, nice note to end on.
By the way, Victor, I think you did a really good job.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Everyone, all you hardworking dudes.
All right, I think that's it for tonight. We'll re, we'll, we'll keep going with this for more, except for we do have our lovely department report and agenda forecast before we really end it.
Thank you, Chair Parker. I'll just be brief. In, in efforts to be more transparent and encourage more participation, staff has started requiring developments of any significant size to go through a neighborhood meeting process prior to submitting. So I know Chair Parker was able to attend one of those for eight twenty-one Pope Street. There's one tomorrow scheduled for the Pratt Avenue and Greystone Facility for CIA expansion. There's one Thursday scheduled for the McCorkle ten-unit multifamily housing project, although that one has already submitted. But generally, the, the idea is that prior to even submitting applications, the neighbors get a chance to meet the developer and hear from staff about how they could participate, see the plans, ask questions, get business cards, et cetera, et cetera. And that has, has been initiated by staff, kind of informally, but we will formalize that process, and it is being required of any significant developments, any significant sized development project.
Do you hear about the city website?
No.
We, I, I can work to that. We do, we do direct mailings to all property owners within this.
I will say this, I have had a lot of mail from the city lately, so.
And so we are working on increasing transparency and opportunities. And I would add just.
But can I ask about that real quick, just to Grace's point? I would be worried that you would, posting on the city website almost invites people who are not neighbors. I think that I, what sounds wonderful about that, it is truly the impacted folks. I would be cautious to let it be a posted location where anyone who wants to be a voice but has no direct immediate impacts.
And that is.
We see that happen a lot, and I would just be concerned about that.
And that is the exact reason for it to be prior to application and also, we call it a neighborhood meeting. So the people who are directly in the neighborhood hear about it. Similarly, you know, I've been beating the drum of this is coming for months. We do the agenda forecast, it's identified on there. We put the, the month, and then we put the specific dates as well as we can, and the department, and, and the city in general is working on trying to implement that at the city council level as well. It's more difficult, it's more challenging. It sets kind of higher expectations when it's, when it's at the council level. But I would just say, the city in general, and our department specifically, has really been working to try to increase transparency and participation. This process is one of them. But through all development review, it's important for the citizens to participate and to know what's happening in their community. And I will say, while we did not print a large number of general plan copies, we do have CDs for sale. If individuals are interested in printing their own copy, they can buy a CD for five dollars and then go print it at Kinko's. So those are available at the city front counter. We have them available, as well as there's one copy of the general plan at the front counter of the city hall and at the library.
Can I say something? I think that, I don't, I don't agree with the, the posting. I think we're a small town, and one neighborhood is all our neighborhoods in many ways. And so I think a general posting for these neighborhood meetings, in the sense that we're all one neighborhood, would be a good idea. And I think for the occasional, you know, maybe unpleasant effect that that might have, I think it's way outweighed by the positive, by a positive sense that everyone is welcome to.
Yeah, I think, I think that's just for, that's just for another, a discussion for another day. I would like to add one thing, though, is I would like to have on the agenda, I would like to ask staff to reach out to Mr. Hall for a status report, and then have staff report back to us to see how that is coming along, if that is okay with my fellow commissioners, of course. The Hall Hotel, Ted Hall.
Oh, oh, oh.
I just want him to see where, where, just.
I was thinking of what's happening with the ranch, but you said Hall.
Oh, oh, just to see what's going, just to see what's going on. It's been almost a year. That's all. Just want to know.
I could provide probably an, an update on both of those projects, as there, there has been some movement on both of them.
Perfect.
But I, I want to talk to the property owners, and I, and I'd like to understand kind of where they are specifically.
Would you like me to also request for Mr. Friedrich, or just, okay?
Not currently.